I'd like to call the January 9th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting to Order. In the absence of the Chair, I'll call a roll. Chair Lafara was here, Finerty Vice Chair.
Present.
Secretary is absent, George Mutu is out, Tom Neely.
Present.
Kate Fulham.
Present.
David Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one set of minutes to approve November 21st, we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, November 21st. Okay, so on the agenda, we're moving the Town Board referrals down the road. Anthony, where did Anthony go?
Christine.
I'm over there.
They have this for you.
Claire, is Anthony there?
Was here.
Do you want to do a second?
Yes, so you've all received the adequacy review for the EAF for 94 Dean Road. John Dennis requested an adjournment until January 23rd, 25th, so you can have it seen here.
Red action deadline for?
Adequacy.
Adequacy.
So, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Moving on to NRP, is John here? Claire?
I think they're just outside speaking about it.
Okay.
Is John Bennett on that too?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, he had another, he had other consultants. Oh, Bailey's here.
That's better.
All right, the mic is on.
I think we'll have.
Claire, so we're moving on to number six, NRP Holding.
Yes.
Claire, it is all yours.
Thank you, so last we saw this, this is on BURF. We had reviewed both the pre-app report of the subdivision and the site plan stack report for both site plans. Lot number one, which is the affordable housing, I'm going to prove is just the cleanup of those existing structures. So, the applicant's representative is here. Bailey, so she'd like to talk to you about possibly doing a hold on the site plan aspect of it and proceed with the SECRRA and the pre-app report, which is the subdivision one is, there's no action, you're giving them guidance going through it with the subdivision, so I'd have no problem with that. If you want.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, one of the lots is going to be CPF, correct?
One of the lots of the three lots is going to be, is slated to be purchased for CPF. It did say, the language in the finding statement did say it could be some other nonprofit purchasing it. But, right now CPF is interested and that is going forward as far as I know.
And then, one lot is the actual Strebbles, the Strebbles facility, right?
The lot number two is the Strebbles facility, which is kind of like a cleanup, moving some trailers, maybe create some buffers, that was the point. Truthfully, I gave her the decisions today, so it did take a little bit to go, you know, to review, of course. So, naturally, just holding off on that.
So, holding off on the site plan.
On the site plan.
But we'll review, we'll review the subdivision.
Yeah, and then they're also asking for the SECRRA findings. And that one, I think, doing them all together makes sense to me, but that's up to you, of course.
Meaning that we would not go through SECRRA findings now and hold off on it, or how do you want to do it?
If we could go forward.
Bailey, can you give me your name for the record?
Sure, Bailey Larkin with Bennett and Reed, 212 Millane in Southampton. If possible, we'd like you to adopt a SECRRA finding today because we're trying to move forward with Health Department. And the Health Department does require that, to move forward with the application for subdivision and also for the STP that's proposed. So, if possible, we'd ask that you adopt your findings, accept the finding statements from the Town Board tonight and then also move forward with the pre-application report for the subdivision. Just give us a little more time to review the finalized staff report and resolutions for the site plan applications.
Claire, are you comfortable with that? Is it that sequence or not?
I would push back on the SECRRA findings, just because the Health Department now has the Town Board SECRRA findings. They, and that's the one you're adopting anyway, so there's no difference. If they're relying on somebody else to do SECRRA for them, which they shouldn't be, they can use the Town Boards, you know, but I just think that they should go hand in hand. You may, after a discussion, find that because of all the SECRRA, you know, I've been living reading this, but all the SECRRA information and all the environmental things that you might want to amend the finding statements when you know what your conditions will be for the site plan. And obviously, we haven't discussed the conditions yet, we just discussed the staff report.
And it'll give us some time.
Can you remind us of the approval of the finding statement the Town Board did?
Yes, November 28th, 2023.
That's good.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, so what do you want to go over, the draft, the draft?
So, the draft pre-application report, just I think we all agree, you could do that right here. Yep, so let me do.
So, we're in agreement that we're going to hold the site plan and the SECRRA determination until, what, two weeks?
Two weeks would be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have that one, and I gave you the latest and greatest, right? The one that had the language we talked about, right? Okay, so that's that.
This is the NRP Holding lot one and two.
Lot one, two, and three, this would be their pre-app, so they can go forward with their subdivision Health Departments. This is the main lot, number one, proposed lot number three, and then lot number two, and then two open space parcels on either side. That would be, what's the 25% for the open space?
Are they separate parcels?
They are separate parcels, yes.
So, it's five lots subdivision?
Well, you know, in open space, we don't call it five lots, we call it three plus open space. And if they're two, they're, you know, that's fine for the last two, they'll achieve the same goal there, so. Okay, so, we, as I said, we reviewed this already, we even reviewed the, you know, all the comments. So, I can just go through the recommendations if you want to. So, the Plan Board's preferred plan is the PRD plan with approximately 4.33 acres of open space representing 25% of the MF PRD area. The applicant has stated the open space parcels will be dedicated to the town, so that was new information, so I added that. Comments from the Town Engineer have not been received to date. Any comments received subsequent to the adoption's report will be forwarded to the applicant and be addressed in the final application. Lot number one is proposed for a 79 rental unit affordable project known as NRP Holding. The site is currently undergoing site plan review and includes a sewage treatment plant. Lot number two has a Strebbles car wash and laundromat. The site is currently undergoing site plan review. The bathroom sewage from lot number two is proposed to be redirected to the proposed sewage treatment plant for lot number one. An easement agreement to facilitate the connection will be required. The subject site is identified as a community preservation fund priority property identified lot number three for proposed, is proposed to be created for potential purchase by the Town CPF. Number six is the park fee requirement. In this case, it would be, lot number three is generating a park fee because it technically has developments rights still on it. So, the flat fee would be $2,500. Now, if it's, if there's a contract, maybe waive that, it's up to you whether you think it's kind of like an exercise just to get $2,500 from, you know, something, but it's up, it's up to you whether you do it. We can leave it, it can be an issue at the end of the process. The proposed action is classified as a type one action. Obviously, I discussed the SECRRA, the whole SECRRA process prior. Property lines between lot number one and the Town Open Space Parcels. And the CPF parcels would have like a split rail fence to delineate the separation. And the Conservation Board supports the open space plan, no response from Trails, and final application for health department approval.
Does CPF consider buying the whole of the second lot?
I don't know.
Is that what you're saying in number five?
Number five, I'm saying that's.
Lot three.
Well, it says the subject site is identified as a community preservation fund priority property identified lot three, so this part of that subject property is slated to be purchased, right?
So, it's in the community preservation fund's plan as a priority parcel, the entire thing, yes.
So, it would have to be subdivided anyway to maintain the Strebbles?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not missing any recommendations here, Claire? Any questions on this, though?
No. I don't actually.
Any questions on the board? Okay, so we can move to adopt the draft pre-app report by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, five in favor, two absent. Okay, so.
Then there'd be an extension on the two site plans.
Okay, so motion to have an extension on the two site plans?
Two.
The SECRRA review and the site one?
Not the SECRRA review, the SECRRA review is attached to the site plan, so there's no extension with that. You can do the decision, when you do the decision, you have to do SECRRA prior to it, but it's the, it's the site plan that's generating the need to do SECRRA.
Okay, so an extension on the site plan?
The site plan, so it's lot number one and lot number two, so it'd be two actions.
Okay, so, extension on lot number one site plan, motion by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. An extension on the site plan for lot number two, motion by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Okay?
Thank you.
If you want hard copies, since I printed them out order anyways, should I give you hard copies of everything?
Yes, so to review.
So good, I'll give it to you at the end.
And if they have any questions, we can email you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Give me quality.
For some.
Sounds good. Great. And then we're in order, right?
Yes. Next is Anthony.
Garrison.
Yep, Garrison. So, this is the property, the 88 Lewis Road.
It's called the Garrison, Anthony?
Yes.
Okay.
It's called the Garrison, yeah. It's through CRE zoning district, act of protection overlay district. Actually, this is the final option, so. We're doing two things with this today. We got a final application and, but we're going to deem it incomplete. We got to do the SECRRA on it, but Health Department doesn't do the approval of the subdivision till SECRRA is done, so we get this overlaps in time, so.
And who's representing this?
Lisa Poyer is here. So, just to remind you, CD triangular shaped property up there.
That's a big large question.
Yeah, it is, it's a cluster plant, so we got a chunk of open space down here, a chunk on the top there, and then they put the lots in the middle, you can see obviously the first lot, some of the construction.
Existing house.
It's actually.
Existing house.
Yeah, but there you can see sitting right there. And then, with a common driveway serving the other three lots and a 25-foot buffer on Lewis Road.
So, that upper one is lot one, and then two, three, and four?
Yep, and then the two open space parcels.
I'm just a little concerned about development to the east of Lewis Road. Is there, does it come in above, where does that come in?
You mean the common driveway for the three lots, or?
Yeah.
You know.
Comes in below.
Below, below where the house is?
Right in front.
Lisa Poyer on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, Lisa.
I think the point of that lot is about right in here.
So, there won't be a conflict then, it'll be below?
Because the other road is coming in about here.
Yeah, I would say that road is sitting right about there. This shouldn't be a conflict there. But when we did this, we, you know, were clear that we wanted one common driveway serving the lots, so that, that we do have.
For those three lots?
Yeah, 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 no, no, that has its own driveway. And how much is the open space, 25%?
50.
50%.
Well, is it tied to combined them?
Yep, 50%.
It's eight thousand?
Yeah.
So, that's right, it would be 50.
And pine boughs and valuable growth?
Correct.
So, the first part is SECRRA?
You got my notes, sir.
Yeah, so, the first part is the part two, which we'll go through, then the very last page is the part three, which I got to fix, it's riddled with spelling mistakes. So, going through the EAF here, impacts on land, yes, as we always say, there's always impacts on land when you have new development, but in this particular case, the clearing restrictions, open space, limiting the number of driveways, I think addresses any potential concerns that you would have there.
And you say that in the.
In the part three, yeah. This, this part is where you're doing the checkoff, and then the part three is just where we outline it. Impacts on geological features, not in this case, surface water is also not in this case. Groundwater, yes, we, you know, again with the additional residential lots. But again, I think that with the new IA systems and the clearing restrictions, some open space we can potentially mitigate there. Impacts on flooding are not expected on this property, doesn't seem to be any flooding issues there. Again, no impacts on air expected. Impacts on plants and animals, yes, again, as you would expect, but the impacts would be small in light of the open space preservation and clearing restrictions.
Are there any, it's not northern bat territory or any of that?
I feel like all the entirety of Suffolk County is in the bat thing, so I'm pretty sure that the bat window will be applicable.
Okay, so we reference that.
We can, but the building department's been, you know, we'll, we'll reference it. Can I have your pen for a second? Yes, we'll reference the.
Because the clearing.
Right, correct, is a time of year to clear.
Yeah, we'll make sure that gets referenced. No impacts on agricultural resources.
When is the clearing window?
I'm sorry?
When is the clearing window?
It's January 15th.
December?
Basically, December to the end of February.
Yeah.
Three months, yeah.
That's a very tight window.
Very tight window.
All of December?
Yes.
December, January, Feb.
Yeah, I think it's Jan, December, January, yeah. Impacts on aesthetic resources, no. Impacts on historic or archaeological resources, no, it's actually not an archaeological sensitive area. Impacts on open space and recreation, no, we got the 50% preservation here, so that's good. Impact on critical environmental areas, yes, the APOD is a critical environmental area, so we like to acknowledge that new development takes down. Pine balance, compatible growth, and those two were, you know, designed to coincide with each other. But again, I guess with the clearing restrictions and with the open space preservation, that would be the built-in mitigation for this project. Impacts on transportation, yes, obviously on Lewis Road, we'll have some more, some more cars coming in, but we mitigated it with the number of curb cuts coming into and out of the site. No expected impact on energy or noise, odor, and light. No impacts on human health, and appears the project is consistent with community plans and community character. So, based on all that, I would recommend that a negative declaration be issued for this project.
Do you want, why don't you go over these?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I say that although impacts on land are anticipated, the impacts will be minimal as this is a reduced density subdivision with 25% of the land, oh, it's 50%, so I'll fix that, yep.
And densities.
Yep, and a density reduction, yes, actually, this was, you had a yield of six lots on here, so it is a reduced density as well, so we should note that in there, actually. Impacts on groundwater are mitigated with the reduction in density, preservation of open space, implementation of the APOD clearing restrictions, and installation of innovative alternative septic systems. Although the subdivision and subsequent development of lots will reduce the amount of land to support animal species, the impacts are mitigated through reduction in density, preservation of open space, and implementation of the clearing restrictions.
Put the northern bat here.
Yes, we will add that. So, we'll put the reference in there and the clearing limitations. Located in the APOD, the subject is located in a critical environmental area for which impacts will be minimal and effectively mitigated through the subdivision design, which includes open space protection and clearing restrictions. The subdivision was not expected to adversely impact air quality, water quality, traffic, or noise levels. A solid waste disposal methods will be approved by the county Health Department, and any flooding, erosion, and drainage issues will be addressed by the Town Engineer. And we don't, that's it, just Town Engineer. The whole discussion about conservation, border, wetlands buffers are not applicable here.
So, we take that out?
I'll take that out.
So, Town Engineer, period.
Period. The character and aesthetic qualities of the community never shall remain, given the open space. And again, this buffer on Lewis Road, which I think is pretty good, so now you're going to have sort of a wooded look the whole entire length of Lewis Road. It's consistent with the local plans and the surrounding neighborhood in terms of land use and intensity of use. Won't adversely affect any long-range plan, and therefore, there will be no significant environmental impacts.
I'm still a little confused about where the road from that other subdivision is coming in and if it's going to impact and be in conflict with any kind of an exit road or driveway.
No, this one's existing, this one's here, the new house has already been installed, so you can see.
But it's right next to that.
It's to the north of it, yeah, but it is.
But just a touch.
Just a touch.
Okay, so is there any way to lower it, or, I think it's going to be in conflict. You see what I'm saying?
No, I see.
They got the driveway to that lot one?
They already have the existing utilities coming in there, underground utilities.
They have that.
You don't want spinning road?
No, on Lewis Road.
Yeah, but the road, spinning road.
Spinning, I think.
Oh, is that the spinning continuation?
That's what I'm talking about, that, Spiny Road comes down.
Yeah, that's the road we're talking about, spinning.
It ends about right here. It's just south of the curb cut.
Okay, but you're bringing how many houses?
One.
Along that, no, no, I'm talking about the adjoining, the property to the north and to the east, where you have how many houses? At least six or seven, all right?
Five.
Exiting on that road.
So, here. This right here, see this white line?
Yeah.
Basically, so our open space doesn't really follow that line, but largely follows that line.
I got that.
So, this will be preserved, this is preserved, and then the new houses are going right in here.
Right, so put your arrow on the road that I'm concerned about.
Is it this one here?
Yeah, going up.
It's spinning.
Yeah.
That's spinning. The new driveway is going to be somewhere down here.
Do you have the distance from the existing driveway to the new driveway on the?
261 plus 233 plus 289.
700 and some, 700, 800? So, Anthony, you could draw a line 800 feet from the existing driveway.
From old country road up.
From here to here.
Yeah.
That's, I think that would, if.
Is that what we just said, 800? 261, 233, 461, 490? Yeah, almost 800, just shy.
So, continue here a little.
It's hard to do here, we got like, shoot.
I know that.
See, that existing driveway of that lot one is coming in right there.
So, from there, if you go south 800 feet, you know where you're.
That's not changing, I don't think.
Right, so if you go 800 feet, that shows you where your.
It's sort of the new, the new.
Your new driveways.
The new driveways.
Yeah, these are skewed a little bit, so you're looking, it's down here somewhere, basically is where your driveway is going to be, the common driveway.
No, but the existing driveway.
If you're concerned about spinning, spinning looks to be about 600 or 700 feet north of.
My concern is the existing driveway.
Of the new driveway.
Right there.
The house, main house driveway.
The, the, the big, the applicant's representative about the utilities.
They're already in the ground.
That driveway's been there all along, right?
It was in a diff, there used to be another house.
There was a house they took.
Further to the south.
Yeah.
They demolished that, and then the other driveway is to the north.
Yeah.
That's just one.
It's one, it's one.
75 feet apart, I would say, and being on opposite sides of the road.
That's all, Tom, it's okay.
I think if they were on the same side of the road.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a bigger concern.
It's just a funny intersection there, that's all.
It is.
I know Spiny well, and the problem with Spiny is you come in and you turn up Lewis, which is like a drag strip from Sunrise Highway, there's no stops on, nothing.
Going north?
Yeah, and what problem is, it's an angled road, so you think, oh, no traffic, what you have to do is, oh, no traffic, you got to get that neck turned, and when you have a stiff neck, as you age.
Okay, well, I just flagged it.
Sure, okay.
I know it's apparent that you're on a, you're not on a T-intersect, you're on an angle.
Okay, so.
So, that would be, yep, so number seven would be a technical declaration.
Okay, so motion for, unless there any more comment on it? Okay, motion to for a neck deck on the Garrison? Someone?
Here.
Sure.
David, second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent.
And then just look through 20 then, the Garrison.
Number 20.
Number 20, yeah, so we're just, just so you know, we need the Health Department approval. Things are.
We need everything.
Health Department and the common driveway plan is the big thing, also.
Motion to be incomplete.
Okay, number 20 incomplete by Kate and second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Good. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
This is a SECRRA review for 1,004 Montauk Highway.
Oh, is this the one by Willow Road, the other corner?
That's your copy, so if you don't, thank you. Keeping that one here, so.
You can test them.
Some of you recall, this was, you know, we did pre-submission late winter, early spring. After the adoption of that report, part of the conditions of the report, the board requested a work session. So, you sort of saw it after, and after they made some revisions, which the board was generally in favor of. This is what it looks like, if you recall, with the presence on Montauk Highway as well as the pedestrian.
So, it's wide, it's wide facing?
It's the wide facing, yeah.
Wide spacing on Montauk Highway?
Yeah. I have longer to turn around.
It was last, before you, I think November 21st it was, where the board coordinated optional SECRRA review. We haven't heard anything from the other agencies. We sent it out to the New York State DOT and Suffolk County, no response. So, today I have it before you for adoption of the agency and reviewing the environmental, all the EAF forms.
Okay, so you want it all in one, do you want it run motion or two?
Well, it'll be two actions on one resolution, and then if the board is comfortable adopt, I mean, the lead agency and if the board is comfortable to adopt a.
EAF.
Declaration, it'd be two actions on one resolution, and if we get that far, I have a separate resolution for completeness and setting a hearing date. But we can start with environmental.
Let's start, I think.
So, do we need, we're lead agency, yes?
We are, yeah. You know, once, once, if you adopt it, yeah, but no one else has responded, I think we should be. So, we, this is, the EAF two is in your packet. If you like, I identified everything, any of the impacts, and I wrote out the narrative for the part three, so I could go over that narrative, we could just start with that.
We found no imploding, all moderate?
Yeah, it was all no or small to moderate, but not even all of the impacts. The first one is the impact on land, please, if you want to.
Yes, I'll follow along.
If you want to.
Yes, that's good.
The, so no or small impact for the impact on land. It's a new two-story, 6,300 square foot medical office building with associated parking and a full building footprint for the basement with storage and mechanical. The parcel's obviously vacant, it measures 40,210 square feet. It was previously cleared between 2021 and 2022. It's an HB zoning. The proposal includes the parking area, of course, drainage, and a new IA system. And the medical use, of course, is permitted in HB zoning. And the, uh, the, the full, uh, area of the property will be disturbed for construction purposes. The, um, impact on surface water, there's a drainage, um, a town drainage easement, um, two lots over. Uh, it's flagged on Wetlands inventory, but I, uh, reviewed it further with Conservation and Margichay. And it's beyond two hundred feet from the nearest, uh, subject property line, so it's out of, out of that zone. The impact on groundwater, um, the project will or shall conform to Suffolk County Department of Health. Um, there's potential storm, uh, water runoff, of course, for the parking area. The, it's located in groundwater management four. Um, it's, it's, that allows three hundred gallons per day, uh, of allowable flow for each half acre, six hundred for a full acre. So in this case, they're, um, generating six hundred and fifty-six gallons per day, which exceeds the allowable by two hundred and two point one-five gallons. And the applicant intends to purchase TBR credits to offset that with the county.
How many would they need?
I'm sorry?
How many credits do they need?
Uh, two hundred gallons per day, so a little less than one full credit, three hundred gallons per day.
Oh, that's two.
Yeah.
The, uh, second page is impact on agricultural resources. Uh, I have this as a, a small impact, just because the parcel is identified as having class-two soils. Um, it was, in the aerial photography shows in nineteen thirty, it was open, uh, farmland, and then, but it was reverted back to the state that it was before, but now, uh, in, in nineteen sixty. And it's been that way since.
Was there any building on, I don't remember any building on.
No, not, not that, we put it on the aerial, there was nothing, it just always stayed vacant.
Next to the restaurant.
Yeah, it's right next to it.
And right in front of Gallagher's Automotive and another automotive.
Yeah, the little spot that takes you back to Deerfield.
Correct, yes. That's a sixty aerial photograph that I've seen as well.
Wow, sixties?
Sixty-two.
That was never developed.
Nothing, look at that.
Like, where's Watermill?
Right. Impact aesthetic resources?
Yeah, aesthetic resources, uh, no or small impact again, uh, the building is in general, generally in keeping with the other, uh, HB uses along Montauk Highway. Uh, it's this, you know, sort of modern barn-like structure, we compared it a lot to their buildings down, down the street, closer to Watermill Square. Yeah, so this is what was reviewed after the fact.
What is that sign in front?
I think it's a conceptual.
Yeah, so there is no tenant in place at the time, they're in coordination with them, so this is just to show that signage will be proposed, and we know that we need to go back for signage. We just wanted to give an idea for how it would look approximately.
And this is the facade facing Montauk Highway?
Yes.
Um, so wood, stucco, glass, um, I think I have- Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I have for, uh, aesthetic resources. Uh, archaeological resources, a small, no or small impact, uh, it is within the, uh, sensitive area. And, um, they submitted a phase one A, uh, or a pitch, and a one B. And, uh, I think they encountered no historic or prehistoric artifacts and no further, um-
We have all those reports.
Yeah, I repeat everything, no, and they're, they're recommending no further archaeological work. And impact on transportation, um, the property is vacant, the new curb cut is proposed, uh, on Willow, on Willow Road. There will be no access from Montauk Highway. Uh, we talked about establishing cross-access, and we're showing it to, uh, the restaurant next door, which, uh, which I think will certainly get implemented during the, the site plan application process, just because-
Do we have it with the restaurant?
We have it with the restaurant.
So we can implement it?
Yeah, so we can do it now, as opposed to, um, calling it future, so they'll do it during construction with an easement.
Good.
Um-
Had a question, commented on the first two bullets. When I first read second bullet, um, I was just a little bit confused, 'cause I was thinking, well, are they not allowed out on Willow? But of course, they are only coming out from Willow, uh, to Montauk Highway. Maybe no direct vehicular access. I read the two bullets together, and it was just a little-
I can clarify that, so it's not, uh, 'cause you are having to go to Montauk or-
All access will be via Willow, or, I mean, you kinda say that in number one, and kinda in number two, but-
No direct vehicular-
I could say no direct.
No, yeah, on, on to Montauk Highway.
So they come, they come out to Montauk Highway, there's no signal there, so they can go right. And take their laws in their hands if to go left.
Yeah.
So that's-
Or, or they could go back to Deerfield and-
That's the way you-
Yeah, that's the best way to go.
And I, you know, coincidentally or not, you know, we have the traffic impact study that's been developed for the property, for the project right across the street.
The dispensary.
Oh, the dispensary, right.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I don't think we require a traffic impact study of this applicant. But, uh, there is some, uh, addressing of your development in that-
In that report?
Other applicant's study, the report. So I think this is an opportunity to kind of, you know, they're right across the street from each other, let's make sure we look at them together.
Yes.
Well, and same with the restaurant, 'cause I was trying to think how the, um, flow of that lot would connect with the cross-access there too, and the reorganizing of the parking.
So they'd be coming out to Willow, I think is maybe where we're going with this.
Potentially.
Just, uh, so the board knows, the cross-access agreement is in place here, it's right in the back here, comes right up this corner. It's coming right through to here, but that's already been set, so I should just look, or no, my guess is it's gonna come right through to here. And then, you know, up to Willow, wherever it's going, you know?
Right, right, well, and I guess we'll get to it on the next application when we look at the dispensary, but I think, you know, one of the questions, having read that one, and not, sorry to jump from one application to another, but I think we may have to be considering whether there should be restriction on lefts out of Willow. But again, we're maybe getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Well, we can't control Willow, right, 'cause that's a town.
Well, we can make a recommendation.
We can make a recommendation.
Yeah, sorry.
Now, where, where is the exit for the dispensary there on the side? You can see it right there?
It's somewhere over here from Willow.
The proposed will be.
I gotta take a look at it.
Well, you can see it, Anthony, it's pretty clearly defined.
Yeah, I'm, but they're redoing the site, so.
Yeah, I can-
There'll be more parking back here.
I can see Willow eventually turning into like a gravel road in Hampton Baysworth, there's no, there's no access completely, 'cause you don't need it. And if you know Willow, it's, it's, it's actually in a quite, quite an incline. So not only do you have to find an opening, but you gotta rev your, and God forbid, there's a slow-moving truck, you know, who's gotta get up that grade. So I can see them doing like, just a one-way, you know, they do gravel.
Right, yeah, but they didn't travel well, and just east of here, the same thing was done up by Hay Ground Road.
Yeah.
Where the last one hundred feet or whatever-
Right.
Was made, you know, one-way.
One-way.
Right, so, right.
The difficulty with Willow, because I use the Gallagher's in the back, is that you cannot, when you're traveling west on, uh, the highway, you cannot see the sign. You cannot see the Willow Road street sign, so maybe they would have to petition to the town board, I guess, right? To make it more visible, to move it? It's a town board that's, has, is the purview over that, right?
Yeah, I mean, placement of the sign, the actual placement of an existing, is really a judgment call, probably-
Highway.
Highway Department, maybe the state.
They go through a local law process.
With not regard to the placement of the sign, like, is it ten feet, are you saying it's, you know, ten feet farther back, or?
That, it's in there.
Like, it should be closer, yeah.
Intersection, not the actual.
Right, right, yeah.
So, what, how, how would we handle that? We make a recommendation, and they have to go to the town, or highway department, or what? Because it's an integral part of this development.
I don't know whether it would be the town highway to make that decision, or the state to make that decision. We could certainly suggest that that be reviewed by the town, the highway department, or, you know, the state DOT with regard to placement.
Can you, can you make the- Not visible, Jack, do you think it's in blocks?
You don't see it, because it's too far in, it's too far in on Willow.
I was just saying.
So I always look for the-
Yeah, that's what I was, I was trying to hear. Yeah.
It's not vegetation, it's location.
Well, let's have, kind of look at it, see if we can be accurate and see how far it off is.
Okay.
That might just be an email from the highway department.
Yeah.
We're doing work on that, the applicant will be fine with moving it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's, that's their sign, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's probably, Claire, that's probably right, just start with the conversation with the highway department.
Yeah.
They may say, no problem, and move it.
Right, exactly.
Move it over a little bit, and, yeah, there's the sign.
'Cause it kinda starts to turn there, and like you said, it goes down, so-
Yeah, so-
As soon as you're on the property, is when you see the sign.
And it maybe, sometimes they get turned at an angle, if they're hit by a truck, or the wind blows, so it may be just a matter of some adjusting up there.
So there'll be definitely more traffic on Willow, and we have a couple of cat crossings there. With signage. Watch cat crossing, yes, because both of those businesses have cats.
You know, cats are not very good at reading signs, so.
Those were all of the, um, impacts that I, I identified, I don't know if you, you know, we'll, uh,
Now, the, the beautiful facade, I mean, that's a very large glass, is this going to be illuminated, is? I mean, you know, we do have concern about some of these glass, um, centric buildings that are lit up at night. Sorry, I don't know what your thinking is.
I, I think that the applicant will be, uh, willing to adjust facades to meet.
Well, the facade is nice.
Or, you know, adjust the relation.
The interior.
We're just worried about curbing the light that's staying on after hours.
It has to be zero limits at the lot line.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and they've, uh, they've provided all of that with a lighting plan, which we could look at, you know, the next phase.
Have we accounted for the monument sign here of some kind? You're gonna have two, or one or two tenants in here?
So it, it's envisioned as one tenant. Um, again, it hasn't quite been worked out who the tenants would be, so we're providing signage just as a placeholder, knowing they need to come back once they have an established tenant. Whether they wanna go to Z P A for a monument, or just keep it as the building's sign, they just, it's not clear at this time. They just know anyone wants to be medical general, um, and they are in talks with Mount Sinai. So you put a condition in your site plan approval that's future signage can be retrieved by the- But given its location and visibility, I don't even know if a monument is one percent required.
Oh, yeah, if you're having one tenant, not, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, but-
But you only want signage on the building?
Yes, at, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, but did we require a street tree here, Dr.?
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna look at that now or after, but they submitted a landscape plan with, uh, a couple of street trees along Montauk Highway in addition to the existing trees. As well as street trees, uh, here, they have, um, everything low, low plantings here, where I think a tree back here, and then screening all along here. I think what we'll wanna look at a little more closer is this area screening the parking, a little bit more with evergreens, or like a portrait evergreen. And then, uh, maybe a little bit more with them with the street trees, I think that's what I found so far.
And again, the exit here is not going to conflict with the exit on the property across the street?
If I remember, you said that the intent was to align them.
They were aligned with the existing condition, we were unaware of, uh, the dispensary application.
But they came in after the fact, and I think they're proposing their entry now further down Willow.
Anthony, is that your application? Are they gonna redevelop that site?
Well, they've maintained that.
Or they're gonna take down the little building?
Yeah.
Or you worried, you worried about them lining, aligning, or you prefer it, or?
What's best, what's best, Tom, in terms of, should they align or not align?
I think if they align, it's similar to a traditional intersection.
Correct.
Squared up each way.
So there's an existing curb cut on Montauk Highway, and then they're changing the other one, if you can see it.
Well, that looks like it's further back, for sure.
Further back, for sure. Where, where is yours going into relation to this, roughly? Uh, ours is, let's see, where's the existing? Uh, there's, like, probably, um, that's Montauk.
Existing is probably right around here.
Oh, existing's like right here, yeah, so we're, they're proposing some, the existing is here, they're proposing something more like here.
Well, if we do wanna line them up, that's the, is that the best, best practice to line them up?
I would think so.
Then, is, can we recommend that to your applicant?
The one with the dispensary.
Yeah.
I, if I remember correctly, part of the issue was trying to utilize this existing access so close to the building, um, was an issue, I think, when they said it last time. See, it goes right here.
I thought they were proposing a new co- newer cut closer, further north to access the rear parking lot now.
Yeah.
Yes, that here is where they're gonna, yeah.
So they'll close up the other one?
This one gets closed off.
Yeah.
So is there a way?
What we're saying is the two, between this site and this site are not, not marked up.
They're not lined up now, but we can-
Well, we're gonna tell both of them to line it up.
Tell on it up.
Can they have a conversation, yes.
Maybe one moves it fifty feet, they always have fifty feet, or two.
Right.
And they, they both have the ability to do it. No, it should, it should kinda go that way, I think this one-
Keep ours, is it better?
The further away from the intersection makes sense to me. But we can look at it, this is the planning thing during the process.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Um, so I have it written, uh, in the part three, I have it written as a negative, uh, declaration with, um, with no significant adverse impacts to the environment.
So that's the one resolution.
That's the one resolution, so lead agency, um, I think it was the very first page was the first resolution, and that's for the adoption of lead agency and a negative declaration. And if the board is comfortable adopting that, I have, um, the second one, which is at the very end, which would deem it complete, and we could set the hearing.
So two actions, okay, so the first one is to declare lead agency and-
Negative.
And a negative declaration, okay, so motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor. Pose extensions, five in favor, uh, five in favor, two absent, and the second action is to-
Deem the application.
Deem the activation complete and set a public hearing.
What's your hearing date?
Oh, February thirteenth, uh, yeah, we can make that work.
Is that enough, or do you want it later?
What's, what is the?
That's our thirty-day standard.
Yeah, what is, um, what, I mean, any more documents or anything that has happened, or we just, uh, come back with the documents we have?
Yeah, this is all, that way we could just have the hearing and then go into site.
So you're okay for Feb. thirteen?
Do your posting and everything, you know.
We can make that work.
Yep, okay, so deem it complete and set a public hearing for Feb. thirteen, motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor. Pose extensions, five in favor, two absent, great, thank you. Want me to sign that?
Yeah.
And I will tell you the backstory about the cat crossing comment.
Listen, I love it.
I was in a DOT meeting, talking about signage and safety, and deer crossing signs. And they relayed a story that they got a call from a resident once who asked that they move a deer crossing sign farther down the road, because they didn't think that was a very safe place for the deer to cross.
Well, these cat crossing signs are on the, in the property, but they're very sweet. They can't read the lights.
Well, who you doing was part of that project, and Martin-
It's like, you know, they can't read, right?
Thank you, thank you, Ben, Brenna. Anthony, nine eleven Flanders?
Yeah, we're, uh, they requested an extension again, obviously, if you recall, a few months ago, we were, wow, we were gonna do a conditional neck deck with a redesign of the site. They've been mulling it over now, and they're just gonna extend it again for a determination until February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Well, should we do it for a month, I mean, more than that?
It's what they requested in writing, so, you know, what we could do is, I'll advise the applicant, you know, that, because the zoning board's doing the same thing, they just sort of keep cutting it off. So I'll ask them, they gotta give me something more realistic, so we don't keep doing this.
Yeah, I mean, we've given them how many extensions now? Five, six, at least?
This is the way into the rotary?
Yes.
This is the, uh, the traffic circle on Riverside, this is seven eleven and the, yeah.
And the Flanders Road redevelopment is moving along, from what I understand, yeah. Okay, motion to extensionist to Feb. thirteen, by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor. Pose extensions, uh, five in favor, two absent, to Feb. thirteen. Claire, Araya, T-
Ariana.
Ariya. Welcome, David. Good, happy new year.
This was last on November twenty first, we were reviewing the secret documents, we had some questions, um, David wanted to get you some answers, um, but I do have the secret documents.
Of each of the three buildings?
These are the three buildings, um, twenty-nine thousand square feet, that, um. Before the zoning board appeals.
For?
For the, uh, buildings above fifteen thousand, the building or buildings above fifteen thousand square feet.
But they're three buildings.
They're three.
They're three, but, but their position is that they could subdivide it into three lots and build thirty thousand square feet, forty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So this is the set plan.
Yeah. And what was our conversation about, this is an issue about circulation and traffic?
Circulation, traffic, so, um, they provided a traffic, uh, not a study, but traffic analysis, partially before by this gentleman here. Um, and you had a concern, a concern because the traffic for the PM was nine point seven percent increase. Um, that was something you had identified. You identified, Kate, Kate, the, the appearance of the building, the, the natural area being retained in the fronts. Similar to the other property next door. Mm-hmm, and then just the size of this, uh, I think the scale, the appearance of the building in the fronts was concerned, so they did go to the zoning, I'm sorry, ARB, so they can speak to that. So those are kinds of, I kinda started to put some of those comments in the documents, so we can go through them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but maybe you wanna just do an overview of data, or.
Sure.
Yeah.
Address it.
So the two issues that I think, um, we're able to address easily is one, traffic, and then two, the appearance of the front building. We went to the ARB on Tuesday, um, we had some really good suggestions, um, that we're gonna incorporate, and then, you know, we're, we're here for secret.
What'd they say?
They wanted some changes made to it, which, which we need to.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have a report anywhere, minutes, it was on Tuesday, but again, we're here for secret. That'll all get worked out in the site plan application, we come back for site plans, so, um, but I think we're, we're well on our way to there. And then this is Keen and Cody from, um, R and M Engineering, and I asked them if we'd take a look at the, the PM number, one I, um, created an issue for you. And try to drill down deeper on it to, to get some, some good information on it, and Keen's prepared a report this.
Oh, can I pull them to the report?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send a copy to.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, that's great.
Go past him.
I think there's like ten copies or something like that.
So this is, uh, same information, just supplemented as the original one?
Yeah. Yeah, so this is supplemental to the document we had submitted dated October first.
Okay.
Uh, I believe we were here, I wanna say, at the end of October, or at least I was here last, the end of October for this application, so.
Can you just give me your name for the record?
Uh, Keen and Cody with R and M Engineering, our office is at fifty Elm Street in Huntington, New York. So last time we were here, I know the, the board, uh, was concerned with the, the relative increase in traffic on the road. Now, when we originally did the trip generation, we had done it with one of the most intense land use codes we could use for an industrial building. Which is specialty trade contractor, which really usually only applies to like a three thousand, four thousand square foot, you know, single office building where it's a carpenter or something like that operating out of that, it's more of a smaller size. So I redid the analysis just to do a comparison, and I presented it with, uh, land use code one ten, which is general light industrial, which is sort of the catch-all, general industrial land use code. And it essentially halves the industrial trip generation, and what it does when added with the medical office trip generation, you end up going from that seventy-seven number during the peak hour down to fifty-one trips. And now, during the PM period, there's about seven hundred vehicles, seven hundred ninety-five vehicles on the road, based off the most recent data, taken from the state's count stations nearby. And yours one's pretty far to the east, so it might not be as reflective, it might actually be a higher traffic. But realistically, going from seventy-seven to fifty-one brings the overall relative increase to six point four percent instead, and that's using a more probably normal land use code than the specialized specialty trade contractor land use code. And that's just an increase of seven hundred ninety-five to eight hundred forty-six vehicles, realistically, Montauk Highway in this segment, looks like it doesn't get that much traffic, so. No matter what number we say, it's always gonna be, in terms of a relative increase, the smaller the traffic number is that's on the road, the bigger the percent. Sounds like so, you can have a low capacity, you know, a low amount of traffic traveling on the road, so let's say you have like three hundred cars traveling on the road, and you're only adding ten cars, but it's still gonna be a more significant increase percentage-wise than you think.
So can I just ask you why you would change the classification to get a lower number?
Uh, we originally, I believe it's a vanilla box industrial use, so we weren't sure what to do it as, we had originally run it as the most conservative use to give the biggest number, and that allows to show, so, let me start. Uh, for secret, you need to determine a significant tr, uh, impact.
Okay.
For traffic, the general standard that, that denotes a significant increase in traffic is one hundred percent, is a, a one hundred trip increase during a peak hour. So we are at seventy-seven with the most conservative use, which to us denotes not a significant increase in traffic. With the more standard general light industrial use, we go down to a fifty-one trip increase, which is half of what we considered a significant increase. In addition, I did a quick, uh, traffic capacity analysis using the state data and our trip generation, what that is, uh, is. I put the numbers into the highway capacity software, which uses highway capacity manual, to simply give a number of seconds in delay at the proposed driveway location. And what it turned out with was using the more intense, uh, land use code for the specialty trade contractor. The only delays on Montauk Highway we'd be looking at, which would be the left turn going into the site, because any right turn off of Montauk Highway is a zero impact movement, because when you make a right, all you do is sort of slow down and then turn right in. And then any other delays would be contained at the driveway on the property, and wouldn't affect the operation of Montauk Highway, as people would be waiting to make their left until there's adequate, you know, room on the road for them. So the only impact would be that eastbound left turn, which, based off the capacity analysis, would be eight point four seconds. So you'd only be looking at, if you were sitting there making the left, on average, you'd be waiting eight seconds to make your left.
Can I, uh, just for a moment, is light industrial even allowed in the HB zone?
Uh, I believe it's just a warehousing, and that's sort of the catch-all. If I did it as warehousing, which I did provide in the report, warehousing only amounts to about three or four trips in an hour, and that's, as it's written on the plan, is warehousing.
So what is the intended use, is it a specialty trade contractor, a warehouse, light industrial use? Because we have to make sure that what you're proposing for your traffic calculations is, is the use that's intended and going to be executed, and also meets the zoning code.
Right, well, well, I guess, I'll take it last to first, right, the, the zoning code doesn't necessarily meet the traffic code, right? So the, the wordage can, can sound similar, but be different, we're proposing warehousing, which is permitted in the HB district, right? The, I believe what Keen was saying is, we use the most intense use to show that it wouldn't approach being a substantial adverse impact to the road system. So, so that's how we did it, I can't tell you today who's gonna lease this building, and we're not close to having a date that we could actually build it, right, we're still going through this process.
But your analysis had good methodology the first time around, which is what you're saying, right, Tom? Which is use the most intense for the worst case scenario, and now we're looking at something that's.
Well, I ran the analysis for both the worst case and the, the general light industrial, I just felt general light industrial, because I just wanted to point out the relative impact and how. Even just changing number by fifteen, twenty cars drops that nine down to a six. It's just, it's a relative percent increase, and because there's so little traffic on the road, it's adding one car adds, you know, a significant increase in that number. Even though realistically, when you're driving, it's not that many more cars.
But it could be a special trade contractor.
It could be.
It could be, and the.
And so then.
I defer to Tom, but I just wanna, my head was spinning on that.
You could, if I, if I could just jump in for a second, the concern here was the nine point six percent added, which I, which I think, right? Well, but, but you, I don't think you're looking at it in a way that.
I can put it this way, for even, if you were to make that left turn, that's the, the major movement that's being affected. We'd estimate, using the more intense land use code, that's forty, that's forty-eight left turns doing that exiting, and that's during the peak AM period, that's when the most people are gonna come into that left. If I say sixty percent of that left turn is coming in, that's about thirty vehicles, that's one vehicle every two minutes making that left. Based off the analysis, a person making that left should only have to wait about eight to nine seconds. So you're not gonna have a vehicle there for eighty, ninety percent of the time, there's also substantial shoulders on both sides of Montauk Highway at that point, and. I know, you know, you're not really supposed to, but everyone does it, when someone's making a left and there's space to go around them, you will just go around them. It shouldn't really impact Montauk Highway in any meaningful way.
Is Montauk Highway at that point, the standard width of Montauk Highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, and, you know, kind of in my mind here, and I'm hearing your argument, which, you know, clearly, the point is try to kind of lessen the impact of, you know, what was presented last time. So if, in my mind, and sitting here looking at this, if you split the difference between specialty trade contractor, which you used originally, and general light industrial, which you used in the revise, if you split the difference, probably your growth is, you know, seven percent, or, you know, seven and a half percent, or, or something like that. And again, percentages, the higher, the lower the volume, that's, that's, you know, another well-known fact. So, you know, I look at the total volume on the road, um, you know, and the capacity is, well-known, is what, six hundred vehicles an hour, or something on a single lane road like that? And, you know, it looks like you're coming up with, you know, three hundred and fifty-two Eastbound, my bottom line kind of is, I think we know. Most of the traffic's gonna come east in the morning and, you know, make lefts in, and then come out and make lefts out. In the afternoon, it's gonna be reversed, cause vast majority of our business, uh, you know, contractors and, you know, warehouse people, and wherever else it might be, you're heading east in the morning and coming west in the afternoon. So, kind of the, the safety of getting, frankly, the people waiting at the driveway to get out isn't a tremendous concern. You know, my concern is, can they get in and out of there safely, you know, as safely as possible?
Mm-hmm.
You know, whether they're making the left in, or they load up and do whatever they have to do, and they're, you know, making the left out. You know, that's where, uh, you know, having a center turn lane would be, would be ideal. I don't know if there's an opportunity to talk to the county about the possibility of that. You know, that's their responsibility most likely, rather than, you know, an individual applicant's responsibility, um.
It's also, would be, I mean, for this segment of Montauk Highway, there's a good number of properties on that north side of the road, including, you know, Borey Bar and a couple other things, I don't believe any of them have left turn lanes.
Yeah, and, but what, you know, what we've seen happen, we've seen it on Montauk Highway, we've seen it on County Route thirty-nine, you know, eventually, the state or the county come in and add a center turn lane, because so many businesses have developed. You know, and you guys are kind of, you know, there's one of the ones, there's a few left to be developed, but, you know, it's almost, you know, maxed out. So at some point, I think they're probably gonna come in and say, we need a left turn lane, or a center, you know, center turn lane, that's what's happened everywhere else. And again, I don't know if it's really your folks' responsibility, but I think this is maybe something that, you know, maybe a discussion with the county, you know, should start to be initiated with regard to the need for a center turn lane on Montauk Highway in Hampton Beach. So.
That's county road.
It's a county.
Right, and that, I know goes a little beyond the reason you're here today. Well, we have, we have, we have through Keen's firm connections with the county, and we can inquire. Right. Right, it'd be helpful for that entire strip, so. Right. You know, it might be something that.
So.
Come up with that whole corridor, the town could look at that whole corridor, maybe something the town has to get behind and help support too.
Now, there are residential properties on the south, if you would like us to inquire with the county, would you want it to be a standard left turn lane, or would you like it to be like a two-way left turn lane? Where it's the median and provides both left turns in either direction?
That, right.
There's only the front for a standard.
That's what, like, that's, for instance, in, in Hampton Bays further on, in Montauk Highway, that's what you have for a good portion of it, east of, uh, Riverhead, uh, of Hampton Bays Riverhead Road, there's a two-way left turn lane. I wanna say maybe two thousand feet from that intersection to the east.
Right, right, you know, I, I think that's a good question, and I imagine they look at each section and say, we need just a left turn lane in this part, but here we need, you know, a dual left, you know. That's a good thought, and I think if, you know, a few folks, you know, know, Alex Grego and the other people at Suffolk County DPW, that maybe have that with, and maybe the town should jump on board with it. Yeah, and, so, anyway, back to your individual application.
I will say, uh, just before we move on, when I, I did do the analysis as it is right now, and it did result in that, it, it's the level, a level surface of A for that left turn, just in the.
Getting, in, into the site, right, right, okay, oh, it's okay.
So it, it is already seemingly a low level of delay for that left turn, because there's not a large.
There's not a lot of westbound traffic.
Yeah, on, oncoming traffic.
Right, right, okay, that makes sense, getting out of there may be a little, when I said I don't care how long they have to wait, I, I don't mean that.
I do. Uh, even that.
In that way, but it means that, you know, they're having to get across two lanes of traffic.
Even the, the southbound left turn, we only had a delay of about fifteen or sixteen seconds for both, I did it as one shared left and right turn lane.
The biggest turn off there is Jones Road, if you know the area, just the entry, entire of Shores, and I don't, you know, the cars are stacked right in the travel angle.
Right, right, and, excuse, everybody does that, I actually know someone that got a ticket for doing that, that's probably the only ticket.
I, I know, I don't wanna. Obviously, I would recommend people do that.
Right.
But, you know, we have to face the reality of what people do do, and try to design with that in mind.
Right, right. And there's good line of sight here.
Yes, I, we went over this, uh, previously, but it's a, it's a pretty straight section of Montauk Highway, and the sight lines to both distances should be fine.
And, and, you know, back to the site plan, the kind of uses, you know, we don't anticipate tractor trailers, heavy duty.
No.
It would be vans and box trucks, kind of.
They, they also have, they don't need a parking variance, and they're, you know, by IT standards, they're exceeding the parking required by twice as much as what they need.
Right, just again, I'm thinking, a tractor trailer is pulling out's a little more problematic than a van pulling out, you know.
Yeah, it's an extra few seconds on the, on the critical headway delay.
Right, right, and squeezing themselves in.
Yeah.
So, so along that side plan situation, uh, where you have three buildings each, um, ten thousand square feet, is it, almost?
The, the one warehouse is seven, one is twelve, and then the medical office is five with two stories.
Okay, so, what do you anticipate, David, you probably, this question is for you, how many businesses are going to be occupying and using each building?
That's impossible to guess at, right?
Well, that's, I know it is, but it has a bearing to us in terms of, uh, amount of traffic, amount of vehicles, you know, we can't operate in a blind, in the blind. And, and give an approval to something that we're thinking of is going to be quite benign, when in fact, it turns out to be not benign.
But isn't it the use, right, I mean, it's, it's self-limiting, the office use is the office use, if you have.
Well, you have special trade, you have special trade contractors.
Well, I'm starting with one building, and then I can work my way back with an explanation, right, but, um, I can't tell you how many doctors are in there, three, five, seven, I have no idea.
And that building is the front building?
That's the front building. And then, as you, you come back, you have warehousing, right, that's self-limiting by the codes, if you have a special trade contractor, you have X amount of space that you can rent to them, and then X amount of parking, you can't exceed that. So, based on the square footage, um.
What would you estimate, how many, for that middle, middle building?
For the middle building, four, maybe?
Yeah, it's, if you do like a five thousand square foot tenant space, you get two, two and a half.
So four?
No, I mean.
Four for the middle building, well.
I see, four, is it twelve?
Yeah, it's about thirteen thousand.
Three thousand square feet apiece, max you can get is probably four.
Four, and then the.
Oh, there's seven thousand, so maybe two or three?
So you have four, and there's seven, seven businesses. So you have four and three, seven, seven businesses, plus the medical facility, and you don't know how many people are going to be operating there.
It could, it could be one. Seems like the hospitals are all, you know, converging and taking over these practices, they end up with one in there.
Medical offices are also self-limiting in that, you know, you can only have so many doctors in the office, and they can only field so many patients at once. So there is.
So what do you think the maximum would be?
In a medical office like that, I mean, I can only go off, my trip duration for medical office estimates, let's see, thirty-eight peak hour trips, and that's twelve entering and twenty-six exiting, uh, I'm sorry, that's for the special trade contractor, uh, thirty-nine. Peak hour trips, twelve, and then twenty-seven, so, let's say you go in and come out, let's say so half that if your appointment's less than an hour. Twenty patients in an hour. So if you have ten doctors maybe, see two patients an hour.
Okay, so, when I look at this, and I, um, and I don't quite, uh, understand the actual detail of your traffic report, I look at it as intensity of use. And we have seven businesses that could be operating here without the medical, ten doctors. That's a lot of activity, it's a lot of vehi, a lot of vehicles coming and going. And it're already dense areas. Uh, we are, I just want you to know that we're paying particular attention to traffic these days, because that's one of the single biggest problems this community is facing in terms of safety. And economic resources, because we can't get people here because of the traffic. So if we're approving something in, in the blind of not knowing how many businesses are going to be coming here, and giving sort of a broad estimate guess of four plus three is seven plus ten doctors, it's intense. So my question, bottom line, more basic, is, has there been some consideration to reduce the size of these buildings?
I'm not the same.
I'll answer, yeah, there, no, there hasn't been any consideration. Wh- when you say it's too intense, you know, I say, no, that's not true, we need zoning, right? If we didn't need zoning, then it would be too intense. The, this lot could be used in a far more intense manner than was proposed before you.
If you subdivide it.
If I subdivide, correct, and I have a plan. I have a plan. Well, why, but why would you ask forty-five thousand square feet when you're getting twenty-nine? That makes zero sense to me. If, if you, if you ask this landowner to go through the subdivision process, you're gonna get the forty-five thousand square feet, 'cause he's losing time, and he's making all the effort for that, and I just don't understand in the context of this conversation, why you would do that.
The, my question is.
Why you would say that, 'cause you're, you're like threatening me, do that or reduce the size of it.
This, David, this is an intense use, there's a lot of vehicles, a lot of traffic. We're looking at traffic, it's a major ingredient in all of our applications, every application that we're looking at. We're asking for traffic studies, traffic evaluation, we have to do something, whatever we can, from a planning standpoint.
I think we can do that during the SECRE process if we just pa, give it a positive declaration, there's too many considerations still open. And we need to coordinate with Southern County to answer those questions on the traffic, then get their opinions, their road.
First of all, you have evidence before you, in two reports, that there is a very little impact from the traffic on this. And what you need to uphold the POS deck is substantial adverse change, and that's not happening here. So, so the POS deck, you're using SECRE as a sword, not a shield, that's, if, if, that's a, it is.
It's not the purpose of SECRE.
Demonstrated.
It's not the purpose of SECRE on the record.
It is, no.
The purpose of SECRE is to examine.
To protect the environment, not to use as a sword, you're using it as a sword. You, you have evidence in front of you that the traffic is very little impact here, read it, you don't have the evidence to support a POS deck. I mean, say to you, I was in here, what, two months ago on the diner? That was a nave deck, that has far worse traffic impacts than this use. I mean, that's completely inconsistent and irrational.
The, the diner on Flying Point Road?
No, the, the diner in Hampton Bays, right down the road.
The medical bill.
The medical buildings, two medical buildings.
This project complies with zoning. In fact, it, it, it's under the zoning density. So if we're unhappy with the zoning code, our remedy is to go to the town board. Fifteen thousand square foot buildings don't work in the highway business, then they should be twelve thousand, but you can't, you can't legislate zoning changes.
We, we do have highway business, fifteen thousand square foot.
Right, and that's what they're, they're coming in.
But there are three of them.
Yeah, they're coming, instead of forty-five thousand, they're coming in with, what, twenty-five?
And that project would, is at a signaled intersection with potential for a roundabout to address traffic flow. Here we have an unsignaled area with a large amount of traffic. From what I understood from your first traffic study, our expert on traffic and transportation was concerned, the, the traffic study that's come back, these modifications.
Oh, I, I didn't modify.
Kind of like a.
They're not really modifications. I haven't backpedaled because I did the analysis with both land use codes that I presented, so.
So, Tom, what's, as our resident expert on this, I wanna lean on you to put you on the spot to say, you know, where do you think this lands? Because if we're looking at the traffic study and we still have some major questions about whether a turn lane would have to be put in, that is a potential significant impact in transportation, which would require a positive declaration and a co- coordinated look through SECRE. That's the tool, not a sword, a tool for us to do our job while you do your job, and our jobs are conflicting now, that's all that it is.
Except you have no evidence to support your position, and I've got expert testimony.
I'm asking our expert.
Well, he's not an expert, I mean, you are very, very knowledgeable, very, very knowledgeable. But are you a traffic engineer now? So, what you. You could hire a traffic.
If you thought this was your only issue. Say five negative decoration.
If the board feels that this is the only issue, in the past, we have obviously taken the traffic information and had someone review traffic analysis, traffic studies, whatever the level, because I'm not an expert, um, either, so I can't give you advice on that. Um, so you could do that, if you thought that was your only issue. I'm hearing from two board members right now that they feel that there is more than one issue though, on, on this. Traffic, definitely, but other issues, maybe intensity, which would be community character and zoning. I'm hearing Dennis is not concerned related to that, I'm, need to know the board.
We have a zoning code.
Yes.
We're not a legislative board, we wanna be legislators, and here we go, legislating.
We have enough.
Let's change the code, let's bring it down to ten thousands, uh, twelve thousand, ten thousand, let's limit uses. But, we're the keepers of the code, here's an application comes in, under the code, and we say, ah, too intense.
Okay, let's look at another tool. What, is any cross-access could alleviate any of this, do you think? Is there any cross-access secured by the joint property?
Are they continuous, is that a strip next to, I can't, there's a puppy, puppy bongo right next to it, right? I mean, we, we should maybe get a traffic.
Yes.
Someone to look over the traffic.
You could definitely.
That's typically what we do.
Yeah, I mean, the, the decision that's in front of us right now is positive or negative declaration in SECRE. And my job, as I understand it, related to SECRE, is if there are a number of questions open on the table, we can't just rubber stamp a negative declaration today, so we have to get those questions answered, or give it a positive declaration and run it through a process that gets those questions answered, so that's.
I'm not saying we're changing the zoning code, I'm saying we have a decision in front of us, and that we can't make the one decision, I can't make that one decision, uh, without having those questions in.
It's very technical, let's get a technician in, as we typically do.
I have a question on the table about cross-access.
I believe there, I'm not quite sure, um, just, I don't know if John remembers. Um, if Puppy Mongo had a future cross-access to the east.
We're, we're willing to give cross-access, we own the property that you sent to this lot, we're happy with that.
You can run a little back, right, along the railroad track.
I can't remember, it might have been just general.
Did you accommodate cross-access in this, David? Did you accommodate?
They put it back there, but again, it's SECRE, not the sight plan, so. We're, we're happy to offer that now and live in.
So that would address potential, like, keeping a full buffer and then just having cross-access instead of the curb cut.
Well, if, if we can circulate traffic behind these properties to a signal to a, of one single access point, which is what we're trying to do with cross-access, you know?
The newer signals all the way to the east, it's like.
The stop and shop.
Yeah, maybe a thousand, two thousand feet away.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a wild, ancient road.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that comes in, right?
Yep. Can I ask you another question, I'm, you know, kind of going back, looking at your, um, your estimates, and you have the square footage, now there's three buildings, I see, yeah, your examples use the two estimates, the warehousing, housing, general light industrial.
Yes.
So you've kind of divided up the square footage of three buildings into the two uses, or?
Yeah, I did the medical offices at ten thousand square feet, and then the two as the nineteen thousand square feet.
Okay, so the, 'cause you have the medical office at the bottom of page one, but it's also included there in the, your calculation for the, in the middle of page two?
Yes.
Okay.
So I did, I, I, I did the, I showed the original totals with the specialty trade contractor, and then I sold, showed the totals using land use codes, one, ten, which is the general light industrial, to show the twenty-six trip decrease.
So you have the warehousing, the.
The warehousing was just to show.
Medical.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, and I don't know if this is possible. The three buildings, is there a way to build them and organize them, or show the uses in such a way that, instead of whatever ratio you're using right now, medical office, warehousing, and general light, change the ratio?
There, oh, no, no.
Have more medical and less, you know, something else, or more warehouse and less of one of the other.
Medical would be the most intense of the three, of those uses, I don't think you'd want more medical.
Right, I'm just, I, I'm saying, kind of change, and I don't know, from, you know, a, a you know, private owner perspective, say, no, no, you know, I need to rent this much medical space, and I need to rent this much warehouse space at such a, such a rate. But is there a way to change those ratios a little bit, and say, okay, we'll do more warehouse and less light industrial, you know?
Well, uh, for.
To make it a lighter traffic flow.
In, in the report, but as I'm maybe they're doing the site, all has specialty trade contract, all has light industrial, or all has warehousing, not a mix.
Okay, oh, they're not a mix.
No, it's medical office and then one, one of the three industrial land use codes. If, if I ran it as, warehousing's a, in terms of the IT, it's a very low generating use, because warehouses are used to store goods. So you don't get a lot of traffic associated with them. You get deliveries and that's about it.
So one and a half buildings be warehouse, you know, the other half be specialty trade or light industrial, and then the third would be medical. That's, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, I mean, it, you know, you don't know who the tenants are and their hands.
Always our conundrum, we don't know who's gonna go in, they can't predict, they just wanna develop the buildings.
You build the specs, but you.
Yeah, but, so, but it puts us in a sort of a blind spot, and that's what's frustrating for us.
That's why I provided the three different land uses and showed that even with the most intense version of the land use, we'd still be under the one hundred trips that is typically considered the significant increase. That's why I originally went with that specialty trade contractor use. And in this secondary report, I do show even with the specialty trade contractor use, the delays on Montauk Highway are still levels of surface of A, meaning it's the highest level of service, the lowest level of delay.
Well, I guess what we, what we've angling for is to have a traffic consultant take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, that would do it.
Yeah, I'll get some estimates for the next meeting, and then you can, you know.
And, and I just wanna ask about any other existing cross-access in the rear of these buildings, they'll provide one? They're, they're agreeable to do that?
On our lot, and then the lot next door.
Then it would be future cross-access to the east.
To the west, we don't, we don't own the one that's to our east.
It's that thin one that's been used as a contractor, but we, we really didn't.
I thought that was a little strip, that was one of the few times.
Funny little strip, who owns it?
It's only sixty-six feet wide, so they cannot turn vehicles where, they actually back the vehicles in.
Oh, wow.
What are they using, is, is, are they doing landscaping?
Yeah, that's, that's good for traffic.
I'm giving them a violation tomorrow.
They back vehicles in.
'Cause I remember they kept, that was one of the few applications where we denied based on special perception tables.
They couldn't do it, they couldn't turn around.
But is that your property?
No.
No.
The landscaping business.
They waited anyway, thought it was.
And there's two large vacant parcels?
I thought it's every day.
They only value it if it's flying, it's so long.
I'm paying for it.
That's the. You know, of those two parcels, the larger one is the one for which we had, uh, we did a pre-application on a battery storage facility.
Yeah.
That's right.
W ill, though.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay, so, is that, thanks for hanging in with us during this conversation. We're trying to do our job, as you are doing yours, so.
In my opinion, but I want to confirm this with all the board members, if the traffic is resolved, obviously we can have the front buffer, um, with the na, natural vegetation, the appearance of the building is obviously through the sight plan approval, they have to, you're gonna have some standards. Um, do you feel that the other issues have been resolved?
Right, and I also, uh, am interested in the, um, allocation of the uses, whether warehousing, specialty trade contractor, medical, that Tom talked about, perhaps there's a, a refining of those.
I can talk to the project about, about splitting up the interior of the buildings.
Yeah, I think that'll have an impact on the number of vehicles.
But I'm guessing the medical office is gonna command a certain square footage, just by virtue of its function.
For what they do.
Yeah, for what they do.
And that's the most, as you said, it's the most intense.
Intense, right, special trade contractor is.
One of the most intense.
Is this second, more than the medical?
They're about even, but I believe, oh, per square feet, medical office is going to be more.
Right.
The.
Warehouse is less, that's the least.
Yes, warehouse is the least, that's why I tried to show the middle ground, which is that general light industrial, which is most likely what it will fall in between. And that's why I showed that as the, it's somewhere between warehousing, which generates only two or three for every twenty thousand square feet, versus specialty trade contract, which is for the roughly twenty thousand square feet, was about thirty-nine, thirty-eight trips. And then general light industrial, which is general, so, so it's sort of the catch-all industrial, generated in the, you know, twenty range, fifteen, twenty.
Got it, I understand what you did, thank you.
Yeah, I, I tried to show the different intensities of industrial, 'cause we do not know the density, so I tried to keep the spectrum.
I appreciate your efforts, once again. Thank you.
Okay.
You know, if you have a conversation with the county, you know, again, this is going beyond your particular application, but I would suspect we might be able to get the town to support the installation of a center turn lane along that corridor.
Particularly along that cor, particularly.
You know, we've supported it in other locations that, you know, to help encourage.
I can't say off the top of my head what the minimum lane width would be, but I do believe the two shoulders are about eight feet currently. So you have about sixteen feet to work with, obviously, standard lane width's twelve feet, so.
Standard lane is twelve?
A, a standard lane is twelve feet, so a two-way left turn lane, you could probably get away with ten to twelve feet. So I'd say there, there might be room, it's just up to the county, it's not, you know, the town's road or.
We worked with, you know, the state on, in Watermill, and, you know, in other locations, and, you know, it wasn't ideal, 'cause you've got the shoulder, which is, does some different engineering specs than the through lanes, as you know. You know, it wasn't ideal, but they were able to accommodate us and, you know, accommodate and get it done.
Obviously, it's not up to me, it's up to the county.
But maybe we all should start the conversation.
Well, having another pair of eyes, an expert on your behalf, it's gonna be great.
Right.
Yep.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent, so I'll get some, I'll, I'll probably have the estimates for the next time.
Do you have the next time?
Twenty-third, twenty-third, yeah, I think we can turn this around, since I have something for them to, you know, to peek at.
One twenty-three, five?
One twenty-three, yep.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, David.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Claire.
Tell you the story.
NFP only subdivision, did we do this?
Um, the NFP, yes.
You, we did it.
Yes, that's the pre-app you were, you adopted.
So set, you have John Galt.
Good afternoon.
So Claire, that's true of thirteen, fourteen as well, right?
Yep, you had done, yep.
This one will be a little simpler.
Sure.
Hope so.
Took us a dub.
So we're looking at four seventy-eight Loper's Pat, it's a covenant amendment. Uh, this is, this parcel has, was subdivided once as Charles Vanderbeer back, uh, in eighty-seven, then it was re-subdivided as John Galt's in twenty eighteen. Uh, during that process, a few covenants and restrictions were laid out, in particular a single common access point to Day Lily, uh, and, uh, maintenance requirements for said common driveway. The applicant has come in and requested to amend those covenants so that they do not, they are not required to maintain the common driveway. As you see in the draft resolution, we first had the attorney look at it, uh, and then we decided that the best approach would be to have a public hearing on the matter and make sure that the neighbors weren't going to be left in a lurch. Uh, we had that public hearing, no comment was received, uh, and no written comments were received during that period, on the ten-day period as well. So, it is before you again, uh, nothing, nothing's changed, I can tell you that another one of the parcels has been relieved, uh, relieved of that restrictive covenant as well. Uh, I can also tell you that this parcel never used the common driveway, so it seems to make sense, it's a vestige of, of the old subdivision was.
So our action is to amend?
To allow for the amendment of the.
Of the covenant?
Yes.
Does the covenant require majority plus one?
It actually does, yes.
One, two, three.
You got it?
Yeah, we've got it, we've got it, okay. Motion, any discussion on this?
You got it.
Nope.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, five in favor, two absent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Claire, you have A and E Club properties?
Yes. So, um, I don't know, is there anybody here for A and E Club properties? Oh, hi, how are you? Sorry, we're here, waiting a little bit. Um, I do have a decision for you, so that's good. Um, there's some, there's some conditions that are related to this, so here's a copy for you. So the situation is, um, and the board might remember, about a year, maybe a year ago, um, A and E Club is at the end, it's at two thirty-one Mid Ocean Road. It is a, is a beach club and has the tennis courts and the pool and such. Uh, it is, you know, on the beach, so, um, on the ocean. And it does have Sam's Creek behind it, so there's wetlands consideration. So, um, something that usually could maybe be handled administratively does need, sorry, I have to pull it from the, yeah.
Those are wetlands.
Um, would need wetlands permit too. So just to give you some history, the tennis court in this corner, I don't know, maybe six months ago, came in for the change from the tennis court to pickleball court.
Pickleball court.
It was in with the, within the one forty-five, there's an existing non-disturbance, not fertilization buffer on the property that Marty's been involved with and is in place. Um, this would be, uh, and it's not shown on this plan, but there's the details, just to the west of the pickleball court, they wanna make a padel court.
Well, that's a new thing.
Paddle.
Yes, it's not, it's not paddle there, right?
Uh, so, uh, Justin Kwasnick, Laurel Tennis and Sports.
Till Megan, give me a name?
Justin Kwasnick. Uh, so, uh, everywhere about America, it's paddle. In America, it's padel for some reason. It's, I don't have a good explanation.
Well, it's the same as paddle court.
It's, it's a paddle court, right.
Because we had a paddle court in Bridgehampton, uh, at the, right behind, on Ocean Road, right behind, right, attached to the golf course.
Oh, okay, with the walls.
That's a raised, that's a raised.
Yes, it's awesome.
Bridgehampton.
And very specific lighting and, uh, yeah, because people play at night.
Professional league, right, it's on TV, it's.
It's a hot new thing.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I gave her, I got a referral from Marty, it's attached, and the fire marshal, who had no issues, Marty has some conditions, I've just, uh, put them into the documents. Um, so we can just kind of go through them, if you're comfortable with that. Um, I'll explain them as we go through them.
Yeah.
Um, just a couple cleanup things, just notations, should refer to the latest surveys, number one. Number two, note the setback on the survey, have the padel court shown on here and the setback, um, which is probably about one forty-five or one fifty for the wetlands. Um, so he's suggesting, because of the existing conditions with the runoff from the clay courts, that there be a trench drain right here, which I guess is only like this wide. But he'd like a design and then we, we just double check it and then, um, you can install it at the same time you're doing the tennis court, I mean, the padel court.
The existing conditions, uh, this is, these courts are sloped away.
Oh, this way?
Yes, and, and there is a trench drain, uh, existing, uh, on that side of the court.
Okay, so this side, in the middle of the walkway?
In the walkway, right. Yeah, in the walkway here between the courts.
Perfect, so can you just show that and then we'll just double check that with him? I'm gonna leave it like that, but we'll just go from there. Um, if you, the board's good with that, okay. And then, um, there's some debris there, so that's a removal. Um, so the, the amended covenant is not to increase the, um, buffer, but to just recognize that the wetlands line has changed. So this is like a snapshot of the wetlands line being changed. So they're asking for amended covenants, um, for that. So we'll give you some documents to just do it, it just has to be filed, obviously, with the court of the, um, county, so that's the, the condition related to that. Um, and then, so, and the last question, um, thing, uh, number four was, uh, that there's an existing connection, are you showing that on the area?
No, no, sorry.
Of, yeah, Green area, um, there's an existing connection with the, um, town beach to the west. They were just concerned that's been used, um, you know, by the club on the town beach, they, obviously the town beach can only be used for town beach purposes, you know, anything else. So, um, that's just double checking with town parks and rec about any connection. It's labeled as emergency access, which is fine, um, from my per, per point of view. But I said, any use of the emergency access shall be subject to permission from the town, uh, parks and recreation departments, so.
Yeah, I believe Evan is, uh, is working on getting that form- form-.
Yeah, we, we've opened, Evan Tiska, work as a property manager.
Okay.
We've, uh, we've opened a dialogue with them.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. We just wanna make sure that it's done.
I mean, it's, it's strictly for transporting lifeguard, uh, emergency equipment, uh, which is why it was made, the emergency access path was written into our wetlands for vegetation, I think, and with Marty in twenty fifteen.
Oh, I see.
So it connects, it connects to that, that gate, um, there, and we just use that, like, forty feet of Me Cox back parking lot to get to the four-by-four access to get to our beach.
Okay.
And it's, you know, that, we've done that for, I would think, twenty years under their purview without a problem, so.
Okay, so I did speak to her, the, uh, head of parks, and she seemed to be fine with it, so, but we just wanna make sure that Marty brought up as an issue that you're aware of it and just, just.
Should we say, any routine or regular use of the emergency access? Because obviously, if it's there for emergency access.
Yeah, it's, it's just for the, the lifeguard, transporting the equipment.
I could say that, any routine, I guess, I'm, I don't know, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna give any rights of the town away, you know, that's there.
I don't wanna. Okay, okay. Okay.
We're pointing them in the right direction, if we could talk to.
Leave it up to.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so then no disturbance of the, the, uh, non-disturbance buffer, of course, clients with fire marshal, and then affidavits, that's what it's plans.
Do you want any requirements for this padel paddle court? I mean, since we already have a history with the Bridgehampton Golf Club.
Um.
No nightlights, I mean, you know.
We could say no light, nightlights, uh-huh.
If you could check on that, I don't know when we reviewed that, sometime back.
It's been a while.
Been a while.
Yeah, we have no lights, uh, uh, proposed for this, yeah.
Okay, it's a standard.
Just, just as still like we do deer fencing and stuff.
Should I say no lights proposed without further review or just say no lights proposed? Okay, there you go, period.
No lights. And what about any kind of fencing on the paddle court is different from pickleball? I mean, these balls can go flying.
So it's like wall shown, right, is this?
Do you have a bit of?
Yeah, so this is, uh, so this is, uh, sort of a rendering of what, of the structure, um, and the area, uh, the proposed area of, of work is actually fenced in, uh, existing.
Okay.
So it's converting an existing recreational tennis space, removing the hardwood clay, uh, installing this centered, uh, and with a, uh, standard, let's say gravel, um, around the, around the court.
Okay, perfect, I, you can see that, that's great.
So is it see-through?
Correct, yeah, so this area right here is all glass, uh, and then, uh, this is essentially a, um, a, a wire mesh that looks similar to this.
Oh, okay.
As the walls, uh, in the center, uh, and then it's, uh, glass on the, uh, corralled on either side.
And it's, it's kinda like a roof? No, it doesn't.
No.
No roof, no, yeah, no roof. It does, it does get slightly higher at the, at the, uh, at the sides, uh, at the back, um, to capture, uh, the, uh, the balls.
Okay. Looking it upside down.
Um, but besides that, uh, there's no roof.
And there's no, like, tournaments or other things envisioned?
There's only one court, so, uh.
You need multiple courts.
Yeah, yeah, tough, tough to do a tournament with one court.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so with the addition of no lining proposed, free consideration.
Yeah, any questions? Okay, motion by Dennis, seconded by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Close of extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you. Anthony? Long Island Automotive Collectors.
Yeah, you, you might recall, this is one where we did a site plan, um, whole site plan's been done, they came in for a, a modification to that site plan, the change of use from the storage of that building to the, um, Firearm Training Center. Um, we had a public hearing on December twelfth, um, we didn't have any comments at the hearing, got a few letters of support, um, for the project from neighbors. So I basically just have a pretty simple resolution, um, since it's just a use issue and, uh. Sorry, that shading made it very dark, I didn't realize. I, the shading just indicates, reminds me that I have to put dates in there, so, um, so this is a.
Some kind of a heading.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, yeah, I'll fix it. Um, so the, the second where it's, it's a modification, it's the change of use from the storage building to a firearms training center and includes changes to the interior of the building, but no changes to the elevations as previously approved by the planning board. Uh, and then I discussed how we discussed it, I had a hearing on December twelfth. Um, at this December twelfth hearing, it was put on record by the applicant's representative that the interior renovations to the building would include retrofitting, uh, to ensure a firearm sound attenuation is achieved, uh, including the installation of soundproofing materials. Now, it was put on the record and they provided that, that data. Um, the planning board reviewed the sound attenuation design of the building and finds the noise impacts have mitigated in the project design, that the project is consistent with the negative document that was originally issued by the planning board on May ninth, twenty nineteen. So you gotta make, you know, you don't have to do a secret here, if it was just based on this change of use, that would be a type-two action, so you make a finding that it's consistent with the original, um, secret findings. And then no new information is submitted that would warrant any further study. Um, so I'm just recommending approval of the site plan of LI, Long Island Automobile Collectors, LLC, for a change in use from the storage building to a firearms training center and include changes to the interior of the building, but no changes to the elevations. Uh, in accordance with the undated plans prepared by W., Paul W. Delandro, licensed engineer, subject to the following, uh, the plans need to be dated and restamped. Uh, submission of all sound attenuation details and spec, specifications, which I do have, by the way, I just realized before the meeting that they submitted it with the application, so I do have, uh, all the specifications. Just to that point, I don't lay out in here other than the plans that they gave us and we want the dates, um, only because manufacturers could change, sometimes this happens, so, um. I just, as long as we have the information as it relates to what's being installed in there, uh, which includes the, you know, styrofoam, you know, materials and everything. Um, per the original conditions of approval, landscaping around all HVAC and utilities shall be completed and inspected for compliance before a C O is issued. Uh, number four, per the original conditions of approval, we'll leave that maintenance bond when everything's said and done, uh, which we will do when landscaping is all done. Uh, and then five is the submission of, uh, the complete sets for signature. Um, I do wanna add in here as another condition, even though we said the two conditions from the original approval, I didn't want to put another one, that all other conditions of the original approval, um, dated, um. June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, uh, will remain in effect. So that way we know that we still have that other one that's approved, and that's where all the original conditions, as it pertains to what's been built, are there, so. I'll add that in, and with that, that's, that's all I have for this.
Twenty twenty?
Yeah, we originally did it June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
But it was a totally different animal.
Well, that, it would, i- i- yes, it was for a different use, that, that, it was.
But the building was different, I mean, it, it.
The building's not changing here, the interior's changing, there's no elevations changes for the site, there's no changes to the building, everything's.
Yeah, so the eight thousand square foot building is just being reconstructed on the inside?
That's correct.
There's a new building that's five thousand five hundred six feet.
So we're not dealing with the site plan at all, this is just.
No changes to the site plan?
Because I don't know what, there's nothing up here, so.
Well, it's there, but it's, it can't be read, is what the problem is, it's blacked out, but, um, yes, there's no, this is not a, there are no, other than the, the previous site plan, the landscaping around the HVAC.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
That, that, those original, still stand, so we included them in here, so.
So what you're saying is all conditions of the original approval of twenty twenty are still in effect.
And I laid out these specific ones that relates to the maintenance bond of the HVAC, because those are the two outstanding issues from that site plan. And they say ten complete sets, we're gonna make that six, that's an utter waste of paper there. Make it five.
We already have six, we submitted six. Uh, on my way in, I submitted six downstairs, um, they're dated today, uh, David Kirst from Matthews, Kurt, Cooley, and Sharon.
K I R S T?
Correct. Yeah, they're, they're dated today, and we submitted six copies. That's what I have for everybody.
Okay, so our action is to?
Uh, it's a conditional approval of the, uh, modification to the site plan of, uh, Long Island Automobile Collectors.
Conditional.
Conditional approval, yeah, those are the conditions, typical.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Kate, all in favor, close of extensions, five in favor, two absent.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, um, so this is C V E, New York West, uh, U S, no, that's a typo, it should be U S, New York, West Hampton, uh, so that'll be fixed.
C V E, New York.
It's, it's, it's U S, New York, West Hampton, two forty-three. It's a lot. Um, so this was a pre-submission conference, uh, hearing that we had on December, uh, twelfth, and, um, it's to install approximately ten mil, uh, megawatt, uh, commercial scale solar facility in two phases of five megawatts each. Um, which will, um, consist of about eleven thousand panels, uh, transformers, on a property that is currently being mined, um, within the, uh, CR two hundred zoning district, the Central Pine Barrens core and compatible growth areas. As well as the town, um, Aquafor Protection Overlay District, there is a typo here, I forgot to add the compatible growth area. Um, the project site is a hundred and fourteen acres overall, the proposed, uh, solar facility will occupy, um, twenty-five acres per phase for a total of fifty fa, uh, fifty acres. Um, there were no comments received during the conference, however, um, there is a thirty-day comment period as mandated by the town code, and we did receive one, um, letter stating that the app, adjacent property owner had no objection to the application itself, but had some concerns with respect to, um, records of easements for ingress and egress over the property, which Mr. Bill Martin will discuss further and which they are looking into at the moment. So the items to be submitted prior to you are listed in the report, and some of the preliminary issues that need to be considered are, um, whether or not to classify this as an opportunity site under the, uh, town code. Um, there are avoidance areas, there are opportunity sites, this kind of falls in both. Um, so it is a, uh, an existing sand mine, it could be considered an opportunity site, but there are some other mitigating factors where it could be considered an avoidance site. Um, but generally speaking, it appears mostly to be an, um, an opportunity site.
I think we should specify that.
Okay.
Because we're gonna be seeing more of these, and this begins to create a record.
Right. Okay, uh, so it's a type-one action pursuant to SECRE, however, um, this was actually, lead agency was assumed by. lead agency was assumed by the Central Pine Barrens because it parcel had been encumbered with a conservation easement. That was a Pine Barrens conservation easement. The Pine Barrens adopted a finding statement that said that they were going to eliminate the conservation easement to allow for the solar facility upon completion of mining activities. So we will have to adopt findings prior to granting any approvals on this project. The main issue at present is, under 330-6 on general regulations of the town code, residentially-zoned parcels, which this is, are only allowed one use. And the question is, are they going to continue the sand mining operations while they undertake the solar facilities? That needs to be addressed and researched, and, you know, a decision needs to be made on how to, to move forward on this particular application. I mean, one of the opportun, one of the options would be to subdivide it, but that seems kind of silly to make them go through an extra step. So that's something that has to be discussed and researched further. Again, the issue with classification as an opportunity site, and it'll have to meet the special exception standards in Chapter 325 for commercial-scale facilities. The site plan applications will require decommissioning plan, a SWIP, and a landscape plan, as well as a management plan for the landscaping.
This is for the sand mine that's there?
For, for the portion.
Decommissioning?
No, decommissioning for the actual solar facility.
Oh, I see, afterwards, yeah.
Yes, right. So you have to have a plan in place as part of the approval.
Yeah, I got it.
Again, access, site, adjacent site authorizations, whether or not they're going to have rights to access over the private right-of-way and have the transformers there, or if they're going to need to redesign the plan, that needs to be considered and resolved as part of any formal site plan application. Site plan elements, the applicant needs to identify the fence heights. They are proposing the 100-foot buffer requirements. They're going to have to demonstrate compliance with noise, submit a SWIP. They're going to also need grid connected, connection agreement prior to issuance of a building permit. Again, a decommissioning plan for the facility will be required as part of the special exception standards. Sustainability, we always talk about sustainability when we review site plans, and obviously this is a solar facility, so it should comply. That one complies. We will have to make referrals as part of the site plan, and then, again, a public hearing should probably be held because of the scope of the project.
So is the sand mine still operating?
Yes.
Yes.
It is. So you'll get, when they close down, you'll get verification that that's.
Right, but again, there is some question whether they are going to continue to operate while they install and construct and operate the solar facility in phases.
It's two phases, right? The first phase, the first 25 acres, we can build right now. That property's been mined. The second phase, those 25 acres are currently being mined, so we'll do it in two phases, and that's the reasoning behind it. The DEC permit for the mining goes out to 2044. As part of our agreement with the Pine Barrens Commission, agreement of approval, is we take, the people that own the property would take five years off, so it would be fully mined in 2039. I'm going to make a comment on town's proposed law and how that changes the dynamic there, but.
Because you wouldn't be able to put the solar in until the, those other 25 acres are finished, and that's 2039.
2039.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, in theory, there are ways around it through subdivision, but that, that's something that needs to be researched prior to the submission of this, of the site plan.
What, what, I'm sorry, I missed the.
So 330-6, because it is a residentially-zoned parcel.
You moved on.
Oh, sorry.
So the, I mean, one of the things, and I'll talk to counsel outside of this hearing, but the opportunity area is one of the things it says, regardless of current zoning classification. So it does give you that out. Now, does that satisfy 330-6 as something?
That's what I talked to. Do they need to revise the town code? I guess that's one of the options.
Right. I mean, it, it seems rather silly, right? We, when, when there's an opportunity for them to do it without having an unnecessary step, right? Because in theory, they could just subdivide that section off and, and proceed, because it's 100 acres in a 200-acre, CR200 zone. They have more, more than sufficient land area to subdivide. It just seems like it's an extra hurdle, but it is something that's in the code that needs to be resolved prior to any approval.
Sure, and also waiting a long time.
Yeah.
To install the second half of your business plan.
Well, I mean, I think that's the plan anyway. It, it's just whether or not they are allowed to continue to mine the site while they operate Phase 1, right?
Isn't that, isn't the town board doing something about the sand mines?
They have an amortization.
Right.
Proposed amortization.
Right, which, again, is, is a whole nother monkey wrench that needs to get, you know, that may affect this project, but.
Well, it would just advance the second phase, right? Because my guess is they'll fully mine it quicker.
Quicker and then close it down.
So my, the question I have, another thing that's under discussion, but maybe I don't know what the status is, is the best legislation.
So there was a work session about that today. There is a draft code, but this does not propose any energy storage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't.
It's moratorium on.
It's a possibility.
I think this is the type of area that's been identified and do that.
Yes.
At least as far as it's been fully tough.
So, so this would be an identified area?
Again, we'd have to make it, make it an opportunity site. I mean, we list sand mines in the, as an opportunity.
But for both, I mean, for solar as well.
Yeah.
So, did your applicant own this property? Have bought this property?
No.
You're leasing it?
Yes.
Did the sand mine people own it? I'm just trying to find. They do.
And they were, they were actively involved in the Pine Barrens application.
Okay, so the owner's endorsement is all there, okay.
So for, I think it would just be useful to note in here, in number three, further relief or a use permit or determination by whom, right? So that would be the town board. And then same thing with the, who determines whether it's an opportunity site?
That would be you.
Okay.
As part of the site plan process.
Okay, great. So, yeah, just noting, you know, whether the planning board defines it as an opportunity site, and where does the, in number three, who issues that relief or use permit for the concurrent operations?
I think first we need to determine if it's necessary.
Right.
Based on the language of the code.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, in the, because we're looking at adopting a report, I just want to be clear in the report, what, who is considering which.
Right, in theory, if a use permit is required, that's done through the zoning board, right? I believe.
Okay.
Right, because it would be a number of use, use variants in, in theory.
I mean, I don't want to admit to that. Use variances are extraordinarily difficult to get, right? Almost impossible, so, you know, I'd rather.
What I would say, let me just, as opposed to the zoning board, number of uses, I'm, I'm not saying any one person's right or wrong. I'm not sure that I agree with the statement that if you need a variance for a number of uses, that that's a use variance. I'm not sure that I agree with that statement. I don't know if it's true or not, because it's still a dimensional standard. Number of uses.
The number of uses.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not a use ban.
So I just, I just want to mention, before we go with that, you know, that requires a lot more thought on my part.
Again, it's all part of the larger discussion of how we proceed and whether or not you can have the two concurrent uses on this residentially-zoned parcel, right? And that, that needs to be happened.
That's a bigger question, not the number of uses, which is more of a commercial, probably a code, 330.
So, again, that's a discussion the legal minds need to have.
Yeah, so I'm not going down the path of making that determination. I'm just saying, when I read it, I was confused about who decides that, and so I wanted to make that comment.
I think it's probably going to be the zoning board, but I'm not 100% sure. I'll discuss it.
Yeah.
And this is just review for today, and then we'll adopt it because the common period, the 30-day common period is still open.
Just, just one thing I want to correct, so we don't get in trouble with the Pine Barrens.
Yes.
Is the easement was never removed. It was extended, right? So, and we have another easement that we have to do, but that conservation easement is on that property. And if there's any inference that it's not, the Pine Barrens will kill me.
Right.
Do you, do you, is that properly stated?
I'll, I'll wordsmith it a little bit.
Okay, because the overlay district, you're going to add now the Central Pine Barrens compatible growth.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
It's half and half.
So that's where it talks about, there's no evidence of a recorded easement. That's where.
No, no, that's with respect to access.
Access?
So.
It, it comes in off of Spion Riverhead Road, and it goes over a, it's more than a paper road. It's like a hardened dirt path over something called Evergreen. And then we cross a property. It was that property owner that we crossed who raised the objection.
Of access.
Of access. The current owner has a right and easement to go over it. The question is whether they can do utilities or not. And, and what's happened is, is my client said, well, I think we can, we can get access from a different spot. So they're in the middle of doing that, and they're going to find out from the power authority relatively soon whether we can do it.
How that's happening.
And it would, it would come out on South Country Road, I think, so it's on, on the property, the property that we're on the entire way.
Again, and this is just an advisory and say, here are the issues you got to work on before you come to us.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So that was number seven.
Just as long as you know where we're coming from.
Yep.
Well, it sounds like it's certainly a good location for this.
So I'll have a resolution for the next meeting to adopt the report with the edits.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom wants the basket.
Are you John later?
It's like a child.
Lady Anker, upstream, this is a pre-application submission for a subdivision. This, this application was previously deemed incomplete. The applicant had proposed a driveway over a small water drain, but he has come back in with his flat, and it looks it followed all the, I used the checklist and it had everything I needed to deem it complete.
So it's complete, and you want to schedule a public hearing?
Yes, yes, please, for the 13th of February.
What does that look like now, Christine? That's 13. Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor. Close of extensions, five in favor.
Wonderful, thank you.
One absent, and you have only one more.
Go ahead.
Do it.
Wonderful.
Number 21, Mulvey, Francis Mulvey.
This one will be tricky. Yeah, so this is the final application. You've had, you had approved the pre-application report from my predecessor, Jeff, predecessor, Jeff Ulises, on July 13th of 2023. I have been, I was reviewing the submission for this application. It is for a two-lot subdivision. It's taking 54,000 square feet and dividing it in half in an R40 zone, 7 Percy Avenue, okay, in West Hampton. One of the lots, as you can see, has a pre-existing home. It's been there for a very long time. I do have some maps.
Down in the middle, right?
Yes, it is. So in reviewing the final application, I had noticed that the proposed secondary lot there down to the south was in an undisturbed wooded area. This parcel lies in the New York State's archeological sensitive area. I did notice the mailers were sent out to the Shinnecock Nation. However, I did not see anything else beyond that. And I was looking, it's my understanding that they, it was a Phase 1A and a Phase 1B was required?
Did they do it?
No, they didn't.
Oh.
So that perhaps should have been taken care of in the pre-submission report.
Yeah, just so the board knows here, it, it was correctly classified as a type-two action under SECRE in the pre-app report. It happens sometimes that we have a conflict with a type-two action, but it's in New York State archeological sensitive area. So in that particular case, the report, because we do say, even though it's a type-two action, you've still got to do the archaeology if it's in New York State. It wasn't stated in there. So, you know, in this case, the applicant just didn't know about it, so they came in with their final application, and then Seth came to me today and said, it's in New York State. So I just said, tell them that they're going to have to do it.
Yeah, so how do we handle this? Incomplete.
Pending the submission of a Phase 1A.
And B.
Did they receive a variance on this?
They do have a variance for lot size, relief for lot size.
Because these are undersized.
R4, yes, they are.
And they, they got the relief from the CVA.
Did they do credit?
And they have their credits.
And they have credit?
Yeah, because they have the Board of Health approval.
The credit was for sewage. Septic.
They got the relief from the zoning board of appeals, and any credits that they had to bring in is solely for sanitary purposes.
Okay, so let's deem this incomplete. Motion by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Close of extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Anthony, you're on.
Yeah.
For 26 Hillside Road.
So I have an application for this site here. It's a three-lot subdivision. This is in the Shinnecock Hills section of town, so it's not an aquifer. It is in the, I can't see, R6 zone.
It's not APOD?
What's that?
It's not APOD?
No, Shinnecock Hills, it's not an aquifer. But they came in with three lots subdivision. I'm recommending that we deem it incomplete. There's a lot of stuff on here. They didn't give a cluster plan. There's nothing really shown on here. No topo, nothing, so we just deem it incomplete at this point.
Who's the owner now?
26 Hillside Road.
Do we know the owner?
Yeah, yes. It should be the application.
Couple of years back, didn't it?
Yes, yes, yes. I never remembered this, actually. And they're not the freezing?
And they're looking to subdivide to three lots?
Yes. Oh, you're in around this area, aren't you?
That's my neighborhood.
Okay. That was a question that I had. Maybe it's from Mark.
Ask Christina.
Yeah, that, that, that's what I was going to say. Now I remember why you're looking at me like that. I did know that. So yes, it's for a three-lot subdivision, but they didn't submit everything, so.
Okay, so we deemed it incomplete. We did, did we, we voted on that, right? No, not yet. Motion to deem it incomplete by Tom, second by Dennis, all in favor. Close of extensions, five in favor, two absent. It's okay for completion and inclusion, that's okay. So then we're going, Anthony, to Ashley Caparo?
Yes.
Number 22.
And we'll go back to, we'll go back to Willow there. Well, you guys saw the site plan before, so we got the formal site plan in. I forwarded to the planning board the traffic study. What we're going to do today is, and I spoke to the applicant, we're just deeming the application incomplete. I'm still waiting for the engineer's review. The mapping submission was good. They submitted everything, but we still have to go through the SECRE. In this particular case, the building's over 4,000, so it's an unlisted action. So what I'm going to recommend is, and you don't need to take an action just other than deeming it incomplete, is we'll do, we'll do an uncoordinated review, because it's the Health Department and the Department of Transportation, and they're not going to be interested. And so on the 23rd, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss SECRE and we'll talk about the traffic study. So it's been sent to you, so take a look at it, so we can have that discussion.
Okay, so, but because you know and you've looked at it, they, you said that they were going to reconfigure the, the property. I know that they're proposing to take down the small building?
That's correct. And then re-utilize the existing building, and then re.
They're re-cutting the driveway on Motoc Highway, you think?
Still eliminating that, I think.
No, that one stays. The, the one on Willow.
The one, right.
Putting one into Willow, right? We wanted to line up. The one, putting one into Willow, right? We wanted to line up with the other.
Right.
They're eliminating the Motoc Highway cut though, right?
Um, that is not shown on the plan. They still show that the access.
Oh, I thought it was.
What you sent us, that wasn't part of it? Okay.
Um.
I think that's something we'd look for, right?
Yeah, we look forward to close up.
Perfect. We'll be having a SECPRA discussion on the twenty-third, so, um, and we can look at the traffic study. Um, let's have the discussion and see, um, when the applicant's here.
Can I get a paper copy of that at some point?
Absolutely.
Traffic study. I read it online, but.
I hear you.
It's hard to make notes on my screen.
You know, I know, I get it. Um, so we'll deem this one incomplete. We got some stuff we gotta work on.
Uh, motion to deem it incomplete by Kate, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, two absent. Anthony, you're Hampton Cove Estates, number twenty-three.
So that was the conversion, if everybody remembers on Toon Place there, um, the existing apartments, but they were once hotels, six or eight of them.
Little cottages, you mean?
No, it was just the one building with, um.
Come up.
Let me. Yeah, this is like right here.
Enclosing. Enclosing the dumpster was, there were little things.
There were little things, but, uh, we initially were processing this as, because of issues, we were processing that there was no septic upgrade happening with this, because it was, you know, there was a determination that it wouldn't be necessary. But subsequent to that, if they're having discussions with the building department and other people, they have to upgrade the septic system for this site. They're gonna have a health department issue, uh, on the conversion. So the applicant knows this, I spoke to them, so they're working on getting revised plans. So what I told them I would do is, I would just redeem this application incomplete until we get the revised plans. Um, but we, they are gonna upgrade the septic system here.
What's the cross street on that, Anthony?
We have, it's a corner, canoe and Fanning.
Right. I know.
It's well-maintained site, you know, it didn't have any issues because it's pretty well-maintained, but, so I'm just recommending we deem it incomplete.
Okay, motion to deem it incomplete by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, two absent. Twenty-four and twenty-five are off the agenda.
On the twenty-sixth, this is nice and easy.
This is a psych disturbance clearing?
Uh, yes, this was, um. Sites will change over time. We did a bunch of covenant amendments in this subdivision. Uh, the covenants, uh, restricted, uh, the lots to thirty-five percent and we probably had twelve of them have come in in the subdivision. Uh, to change it, no public hearing was, uh, necessary. So this is known as Lot Forty-One of Noel Prest Woods at sixteen Cambridge Court. Um, it was subject to a thirty-five percent covenant restriction and they requested a sixty percent in accordance with the APOD, uh, consistent with what we've done on the other ones. Um, that's why I'm recommending, it, it was not subject to a public hearing, uh, but does require the five, uh, votes on this. Uh, so I, it's the one resolution I do have, but forgot to give to you. So I'm recommending approval of this covenant amendment, subject to review and approval of the legal laws.
Any questions?
Yep.
Motion by, by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, that's a supermajority. Two absent. And now we're gonna go back to the Town Board resolutions that Claire's gonna walk us through.
Yeah.
Town Board referrals.
That's around the block, isn't it?
It's left, oh, okay.
We've had three or four since I got here.
Yeah.
And all the houses have gone up for sale immediately, or they've opened up for sale.
Some speculation.
And they've had to get these.
Oh, yeah.
All the houses.
Yes.
Sure.
Just go, we'll go one at a time if that's okay. Start with the distance from the streets. One, right, is that next?
Which one?
Distance from the street.
Are we in a work session?
No.
This is under work session.
No, it's under Town Board referral.
Oh, okay, above it says work session, so.
Yeah, and there's something under there. No. Um, this, these, uh, the first three are like easy cleanup things. So to date, instead of saying the property line, it says distance from the street, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the code, when it gives you setbacks, the dimensional, it says principal, side yard, front yard, rear yard. When you get to accessory structures, it says side yard, rear yard, and then it says distance from street setback, which is creating all sorts of issues because I use this example, if you have a flag lot, okay? And you get to pick your front yard and the, uh, but what's been happening is the building department's been treating that requirement, distance from street, as a front yard setback. Now, I've done consulting work, I would go and I would scream and I would say, where in the code does it say? If I was distance from street, that's, that's what it says. So we're fixing the code and so we can eliminate this problem.
It says distance from front lot line.
Distance from front lot line is what it should say.
From front lot line.
The other way of looking at that is the right-of-way, the town right-of-way. On the property owner's side, it's their front lot line, on the town side, it's the town right-of-way.
Right, but in a, as it says, in the flag strip, by cold, there's no street.
That's right, so the, the issue is that if someone said, you know, they have a flag lot and they want to adhere to it, my point is, is that one can make the argument, um, the distance from street is seventy feet for an accessory structure. Well, that brings me into the, you know, into the flag strip, basically what it does. You would make the argument and say, I meet the code requirement. You can't measure distance from street from an interior lot line, that's not what the code says. So we're fixing it, basically.
So the language has changed where, Claire?
So instead, um, it's actually, and I forgot, I forgot to tell you. It's in the actual dimensional tables. It'll, instead of saying distance from street, it'll say distance from lot line. In very small.
Is it, is this what we're looking at, the resolution?
That's the resolution for it, but it actually refers to this table, this actual table, and that's word, the wording that's changing. Okay.
And this, you're adding the word waterfront property.
Yes, and they're also adding word wa, rather than the waterfront property line, yeah.
So you have a couple of issues.
That's also the property line.
Right, because in the situation of waterfront property, it switches, right?
Right, so you're solving a couple of issues.
Yeah, so your, your front is your, the water, but, you know, it says front.
Same as the flag lot, for you.
Right, and that, that, the reason for adding the wetlands thing is because, or the, that switch, is because you wanna, again, measure it from a property line, because you have to double your property lines when you have a waterfront and everything. If you maintain a distance from street setback as opposed to calling it the front line, it creates all sorts of interpretation problems for the town.
Okay.
Yeah, so I must say the planning board supports the clarification of the code?
Yes, nice, yeah.
I'll move it.
Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, two absent. Okay, second one is, well.
Pyramid.
Pyramid, height and pyramid.
Yes, Anthony can explain this one too. He experiences everything.
I could get this on. Well, because the way.
You've got a ZBIA part.
They go to the ZBIA. Look, the way that it was stated is, you know, how they are measuring, um, the pyramid law, basically, you know, as it relates to the grade of the property. So the way it was worded, it says the vertical distance measured from the average elevation, um, of the existing natural grade before any fill has been or is proposed to be placed thereon.
In other words, it shouldn't be elevated, it should be ground level.
Right, but they, but they limited, what they said was, it's gotta be measured from natural grade before any fill has been brought on. You could alter the natural grade without bringing any fill on the property, any type of disturbance. So what they did was, they changed the language to say that vertical distance measured from the average elevation of natural, not existing, of the natural grade prior to any site disturbance. Um, so that way, it's, 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 um, better than saying fill. Because the presumption is you're bringing in fill and you, you know, just elevating the property, you don't wanna measure from that. Um, so we say from natural grade prior to any disturbance. No trees come out, no, you know, because you could go in there and grade.
Yeah.
Without bringing in any fill.
Suppose there's like a dip, a natural dip, that's the natural grade.
Yeah, well, they gotta measure it from a, a, the, the correct point, uh, but yes, if, that, that was the natural grade, that, that would be there, to their benefit, I suppose. But yeah, that, that was the reason why they did it is because, um, you could get crafty when the code's written, you know, some gray areas.
Yes, loophole, these are loopholes.
Well, it's a use of language, you know, you need precise language.
Yeah.
Natural grade, okay. And on the back of this, it's how you, you define how the natural grade is determined, which is, which is good.
Yes, and because they, they, they added, uh, determined by indicating spot elevations, again, prior to any disturbance. Um, so they, they give you how, how you need to measure this.
So who does this?
Architects have to. This is a building department issue mostly.
Mostly.
You will rarely see it cut before this planning board unless it involves a commercial property.
It's all building.
But it's building, the architects have to do it and then, um, then it goes to Marjorie. And Marjorie reviews it and very, very discreetly.
This is one of the things that we had brought up with Janice, I think, so, thank you.
Yeah, well, the, the, you'll, if you watch zoning board, if you're inclined to do that, um, uh, you'll see that a lot of the variances we get.
Yeah. Pyramid, yeah.
I'll move that. Yeah, so the planning board supports, uh, the clarification.
Yeah, same language, yeah. So motion by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor.
This is more of a Scrivener's error. Uh, it just, in the regulations under three thirty-one eighty-three, um, of the town code, it references the wrong code. Instead of the fencing where the screening and the dumpsters is, uh, it references one oh eight B where it's supposed to be one oh nine B. So it must have been like a change at one point and then they just never carried. So this is a correction.
So where are the deleted words and?
Last sentence, treaty of the dumpsters pursuant to three thirty, it was one oh eight B, which has nothing to do with, um, anything. So it's one oh nine B.
Nine B became eight, or somebody was dyslexic.
Yep.
I would say no planning issues.
Okay.
No.
No.
Clarification, well, it's a clarification.
Fully support.
It's all clarification.
There's no clarification.
Because in other world, actually, uh, we should, the, the park requirement, um, how we calculate park requirement is not correct in the subdivision regulation.
All right, let's get to, let me think about it.
Yeah, but the problem with motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Motion by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor. Close extensions, five in favor, two absent. Now, what was that?
I said the park requirement, that the code's not correct, actually. It's supposed to be calculated at point zero five, um, acre per lot. It says point five, that's a big difference.
That's huge, for money-wise, right?
Well, it's huge for the amount that comes out of a yield and everything, so that needs to be fixed.
And there's a few in the vehicle and traffic law, I could tell you too.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know. This last one is a little bit more, um, of a discussion. Um, so if you may be aware that when something has a, has no CO and it's a non-conforming use, to date, they go to the building inspector, chief building inspector, who makes a determination, um, based upon the records they're submitting. And they're submitting affidavits that, from people that say, this has been in place and there since nineteen fifty-seven, right? And so time has passed, you know, it's about seventy-plus years ago, the, the people alive, one, you're gonna, but the issue with this is coming up is that they'd like to have a public process by which there is the establishment of these non-conforming uses on the property. Because right now, it just submitted administratively and the chief building inspector looks at the information and makes a determination whether, well, a neighbor could come, right, and say, well, no, that building wasn't there. I've been here since, you know, that building was built in eight, nineteen eighty, you know? So, um, it gives the opportunity for neighbors to be informed. And so this is a ZBIA process, just like a regular ZBIA application for the establishment of non-conforming uses, pre-existing non-conforming uses.
So the ZBIA determination would override a building department, right?
Well, there wouldn't be, this would be a new process. It would no longer be administrative for non-conforming uses, non-conforming uses. Not, not houses, houses will still go through the regular process. But if you're a non-conforming use, like two, two cottages on one piece of property, that would now, if they, there's no COs in the property, you'd now have to go through a ZBIA. Somebody would come in and say, oh, yeah, my family's had this here forever and nobody knew any better. So they're informing the neighbors, so the neighbors could say, yeah, we've been here, we saw it, or we didn't see it. Right.
What is the actual process?
So the process.
Just like the ZBIA, an application, regular ZBIA application.
Just noticing, is there a hearing?
Yes.
There'll be a hearing. The way it works now is, you gotta submit whatever criteria, whatever information you can to, you've gotta prove to the chief building inspector. You submit the information, you know, they find that everything's in order, that it's a pre-existing CO to be issued for a non-conforming user building. If a neighbor wants to challenge that, because you could challenge, I, I see that the zoning board, you challenge the chief's, um, determination. Um, you only get thirty days or something to do it and, um, since these are typically ministerial applications, the public doesn't know about it. So in these particular cases now, we'll just set it as a public, like any other ZBIA application, there are always public hearings.
The, the only drawback with this process is that if the building inspector makes a determination and then your, your remedy, if you're a neighbor and objective, your remedy is to go to the zoning board of appeals. Now, it's a zoning board appeals application, your only remedy is a much higher bar, it's Article seventy-eight.
It's seventy-eight.
I think a more workable solution would be a noticing provision through the building department. It's like, hey, I got an application for a pre-existing C of O, do the ra, radius noticing, just like we do in the normal code. Here's, here's the application, here's what they, here's their, here's their evidence and here's what they're, um, uh, asking me to approve. That allows, first of all, it brings the, it brings the residents, the neighboring properties in at earlier juncture. And second, it gives them an easier avenue to appeal because then they can just go right to the ZBIA. That would be.
But.
And it still leaves the authority in the building department.
Article seventy-eight, to file up Article seventy-eight, I mean, for the average neighbor, working neighbor, you gotta get an attorney, you gotta.
But they have a ZBIA process already, though. They're in the, they would be in a ZBIA hearing process already.
Right, but if the ZBIA, you're going right to the ZBIA.
Right.
The only way to challenge a ZBIA is through an Article seventy-eight. If, if they, if they wanna challenge the building department's determination, it's a much easier avenue to go to the ZBIA.
It's just, there's no public, none, um, the purpose of a building department is to be administrative.
Right.
Not to have a public portion of their property.
No, 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 there wouldn't be a hearing.
No, I know, but then what do you, what do they?
Noticing provision.
And then, you know, he issues it and three days later, they get the letter that says.
The applicant, the burden could be in the applicant.
It has to be.
To, to.
Undertake that burden, to have to do mailing, tell it every time somebody comes in and asks.
For, for requesting a, that, that's a big, that's a big request, that's a big ask of the, the building inspector. I've got a pre-existing non-conforming use, please, please recognize that. That's a big ask. I don't think it's a high hurdle for an applicant to say, to have to do the radius mailing, just like you do in a public hearing and everything, showing the map, showing the request, and the, it's on the applicant, so it's no more work for the building inspector. That could bring the objectant in earlier, because they, wait a minute.
But who are they objecting to then?
What's that?
Who are they, they're obje, they're objecting to the chief building inspector, instead of the chief building inspector going, issuing a permit, right? This is what he usually does. Now he has to wait to see if the public comments come in, if they come in like ten days later. You know what I mean? I'm just thinking, like, that's not, that's what we do, right? But that's not his, it would be making a new public process with the, with the, this, the building department. Yeah, I don't know. I, I'm gonna suggest it.
Here's what I see all the time. We didn't know about this and our window to challenge this now is closed because we didn't, it's like ten day or whatever the thing. We didn't know, if we had known about this, we were challenging, I'm, you know, I hear this constantly.
Yes.
And this way, hey, you knew about it, you're on notice, get your ducks ready, cause you could go right, as soon as that determination is made, you go right to the ZBIA.
Hmm.
You know, Dennis, you made a fair point, so I can really think of this, you know?
I think it warrants further, I think it warrants with Janice or someone who was ever, I don't know, who's sponsoring the legislation. It may warrant a little bit more discussion on it.
No, I think it does, um.
They're making me think about something here, about bringing right at the very get-go here, the public involved in what's normally COs and building permits, like Claire said. the public involved in what's normally COs and building permits, like Claire said, are typically administrative.
They are, except they are conforming. The time period is ending for these affidavits.
That's what the issue is, that they can town fund you.
I mean, that is ending.
No, we're talking about thirty days.
It's going to be over in the next ten years.
This is a big thing.
Just, just to take a theoretical make-believe situation. Somebody comes with a pre-existing non-conforming, not an application, they want a CO for that property, right? So they go to the building inspector. What you're saying is that the building inspector then has to do what?
The building inspe... They, the applicant submits whatever evidence he has to the building inspector, usually in the form of affidavits. And then the building inspector says, okay, I'll accept your evidence, I'll issue you pre-existing non-conforming use. No one knows about it.
All right, so that's the problem. You want to get it out of that area because it's an administrative, he's doing an administrative function, but yet when he gives approval, it's, he's giving much more than that.
It's the opposite. You're right in theory, but what he's actually doing, he's giving administrative approval to a non-administrative, which should not be an administrative approval function.
Okay, that's, okay.
Misdiscretion and misproof.
It's, exactly. It's the last vestige of what they characterize as the backroom process. It's happened a lot in this building, but that's the last vestige. It's a closed office, one-on-one, no one knows about it, and we hear it time and again, gosh, no, no, we, we, we would have gone to the ZBA and challenged.
Maybe don't even let them make the application.
Well, it's going to say pre-submission.
They have to do the application, the affidavits they have, and proof of service to all the surrounding, however many feet you want to make it, that they saw these affidavits, they saw what they're trying to do, and they have X number of days to, you know, object, make an objection or something like that.
Just like we do on public hearings.
So where's our initial point of contact, though?
That, that they're creating another process for the building department. I mean, no matter how you look at it, even if you make them do it, the building department has to track.
We have pre-submission hearings.
No, but the building, it would be part of the application process. Here's your affidavits, and you just, where your, where's your notices?
Right, but then they need, they need time to show that they, they have done an affidavit. Somebody has to look at it and say, okay, yeah, your affidavits did have the five hundred feet. Those are all the residents you had to deal with. We have to give them the list of people on the assessment roll that are included within that five hundred rating. There's things that...
Well, that's up to them. Their attorney or...
We give them that.
Their consultant would...
We give them that.
Well, may, or, just I'll give my, maybe, sorry.
How do they do it on public hearings? Who gives them that?
We give them that.
Okay.
The assessor's office does that.
Well, maybe then what we do is...
But it's the applicant that has to secure that from the assessor's office.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so it's public record. It's a big, it's a big thing.
No, you're right. That's maybe what we, I'm just, I'm not, I'm just giving a opinion here.
Yeah, no, I think this is great discussion.
Maybe what we say is the planning board finds that this section of the code warrants some changes. However, the process of how this is going to happen needs to be better defined, so it's not burdensome on the building department or excessively burdensome on that we need to have the process defined better.
It warrants further discussion.
And allows, allows public input.
Early.
You know, that's, that's the argument for a public hearing.
Yeah, the question is what's the mechanism to get that public comment.
That no closes, and then people pull hair out.
Right, that's the thing. The process that Dennis is saying is public comments, but writing and emails, but it's not a public hearing.
Right, right. I get a notice and I send a copy of my survey, or whatever it is I have that disputes the application. I've just mailed in a copy of my survey, or whatever it might be.
As you can imagine, there could be downs...
You don't get a chance to talk it through.
There could be downsides on a public hearing, too, coming forward with the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, sure.
On issues like this, because as, as everybody knows, you know, they could sort of go sideways, you know?
People told time and again, your, your window to challenge this decision is closed. I've heard it so many times. We've heard it collectively.
So maybe that should also be an ingredient, that the window for challenge should not be thirty days, it should be sixty days or three months.
Well, this whole thing, I think, warrants...
Do we have a publication requirement once these, once they render them? Do we have a publication that they have to, I approve this one in the paper?
You mean for seed pre-existing here?
Currently, I mean?
Not, not at all.
I mean, maybe, maybe a requirement for a publication would put, would give everybody notice that they have, that's when their ten days is going to...
I mean, yeah, we got to think, we got to think about this a little bit.
I think our message to the town board, we're not going to solve this at four-thirty on the planning board.
No.
That's true.
This isn't, this is one of the paramount issues facing land use decision. And, and the planning board has significant suggestions and input with regard to this process, and would appreciate further discussion with the project sponsors or Janice or whoever.
We'll get Janice to come in here.
Whoever brought this forward, like, thank you for thinking of this and bringing this forward.
Yeah, it's an important issue, you know?
Yeah, no, it's good. Um, yeah, no, you don't have to respond today. The hearing's not till the twenty-eighth.
Well, we could tell them. We'd like to, we'd like to sit down and talk.
That's our comment.
Okay, so supports a new process. I'm going to say the planning board supports a new process which involves the public in the decision-making, doesn't burden the building departments.
However...
However.
In the application process.
Oh, well, that's...
Warrants further discussion.
She's been here. It warrants together now.
As long as it doesn't come back to the planning board, you know, this is...
No, no, no.
I can't, I can't. This is, this is actually, this is a permit that's being issued. It can only be issued by the building departments or, you know, the ZBA.
The ZBA.
It's a big thing out here, though.
It is, you're right.
Well, there's a lot of, well, the whole pre-existing non-conforming thing is crazy. You know, I mean, we've never...
I think that whole section of the code needs to be...
We've nev... A whole section of the code needs to be reviewed.
Yeah.
Because we never retire any pre-existing non-conforming uses.
We just automatically give them a fifty percent expansion.
Or a change, or a change to another...
Or change for not before...
When it shouldn't be fifty percent, it should be more like thirty percent.
Ninety percent of our headaches.
Is it before the town board?
Now it is, those expansions are...
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Ninety percent of our headaches, exactly, come from this, these non-conforming...
The non-conforming uses.
Okay.
Can I ask one other thing, while...
Yeah.
Should we, is that our...
Well, I want to make sure that your language is good. Planning board supports a new process which involves the public in determining pre-existing non-conforming certificates of occupancy. However, this warrants further discussion with the town board or...
Well, I think that the proposed, uh, spread of changes warrant further discussion before anything's adopted, as the planning board has.
Because we have to send this, we have to adopt this as our, as our report, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, but you could also think about it.
That captures it.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Let me issue, do that, and then we'll go from there.
The fact that they couldn't come to a conclusion means...
I guess it, this is, there's a lot to it, and I think the intention is all good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that there be public, and that's why I wanted to put that right in the first sentence.
So I'll, I'll move to adopt that.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, motion to revise by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor. All right. Five in favor, two absent.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The other day, did, I watched, I think it was the work session, like December nineteenth or something like that. I think there was a discussion, Janice was having a discussion about clearing limits.
Okay.
Clearing regulations. Do you know?
No, that's new. Something like...
I think they were talking about potentially having clearing restrictions on residential. Is that the one?
Right, right.
Yeah, that they haven't done anything yet, but yes.
You mean outside of APod?
Yeah. I think it was just a per, a preliminary discussion that we brought up.
We've talked about that.
We brought up, yes, clearing restrictions.
Whatever the mechanism, the process is here, you know, I think we'd like to hear what's going on or opinionate on what's going on, or...
Okay.
Yeah, I think at one point, Marty Shea shared his tree protection law that never went. We had suggested that that be looked at again, so I don't know if that's renamed.
Okay.
Do they have a copy? Have they a copy of that?
Um, yeah, I have it in my email, so I can send it.
Can you send it to me?
Yep.
I'm telling Janice she's going to have to come.
Well... Well, since the issue comes before the planning board, it's something that we should weigh in on, you know? And I think, thank you, Dennis, for looking at it differently, creatively. So, I mean, there are always more ways to do it, right?
Right.
Yeah, but it's got to be, it's got to be well thought out because you can't just randomly send things to the zoning board or to the planning board to resolve without having it, especially when the public's involved because everything at the zoning board is a public hearing, everything. There's nothing other than a public hearing.
That's correct.
So no matter what we discuss is open to the public all the time, so we've got to have this hashed out before we...
Sure, sure. And it's great that I think that the, that the codes are being tweaked and refined and... So, um, okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by...